Call to order this meeting of the Lafayette City Council. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we take roll, I just want to thank council for moving the meeting back to seven o'clock. Um, roll call please.
Uh, Council Paulson, President, Council Burrows?
Here.
Council Christwell?
Yes, sir.
Council Gogan?
Here.
Hi, Council Kit is excused, Council Mackey?
Here.
Mayor Malcolmson?
Here, okay, we have a point, so we will continue. Um, this is the time we come to for citizen input. Uh, Brandon, do you want to, or Kennedy, is anyone signed up? Uh, pass.
Madam Mayor, um, I don't know how you want to address it, but I know, um, Planning Commission Chair, uh, Plan, Plan Commission Chair Cur is here. And I don't know if you want him to save anything from the Planning Commission side for the public hearing, or you'd rather add something to the agenda to discuss that, or have him come on the, um, citizen input.
Um, I say instead of citizen input, well, the next line is add additions and deletions, and we can add it before the public hearing or something.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, is there any, okay, I will wait for that. That way the timer's not going on. Or, I'm sure.
Hi.
Okay, so when, also Ron, you would like me to skip you, right? Wrong, right? Okay, well, you were gonna, that's why you signed up was for the planning commission event? Right, nothing else? Okay. Um, so Wade with us then?
Good evening, Council. Hi.
Hi.
Hello, to see you, I want to thank you for your service to our community. Uh, I just wanted to ask what's, uh, being done as far as the park development. When I, when I was on the council years ago, we, we developed a subcommittee, and we did a lot of work in, uh, interviewing the community. We went to every school, uh, in the area, including McMinnville, and asked the kids what they wanted in a park specifically for the park over on Bridge Street, which I forget the name of, is there?
Veterans.
Veterans, veterans, okay. I drove around there today and there's no sign, so that might be a suggestion too, is it'd be nice to have a sign that said veterans park up there somewhere. But anyway, um, city had that piece of property, and we thought at the time that it would be a great place to develop for some type of activity for the kids in the community. And I guess it's very apropos in light of the conversation I just heard over at the town hall talking about things for kids to do in our community. So, like I said, we put a lot of work into it and came up with a plan and a lot of statistics that I still have with me, if anybody's interested in looking at those. And I know that, uh, there was money set aside to help get the development of that project going. Uh, it's, it's been several years and I, I don't think anything has moved forward on that. So I came tonight just to see what the plan was, if that still is in the works? And if it is, great, if it's not, I would encourage you to take a second look at the work that was done and see if you might be able to, uh, follow up on that and get that project going again. Uh, the layout that we had, we actually had a, a landscape engineer do a drawing for us. And there was a walking path and picnic tables and an obstacle course and a half basketball court. And all kinds of things that would be fun for anyone to do, especially our teenagers. A place to go hang out and exercise and that kind of things. I think it's still a real need in our community, and I would just, uh, encourage you to move forward with that if at all possible, so. That's my spiel, any?
Um, so we pretty much stand, stick to like, public input, we don't give a whole butt, like, we're not going to big presentation. But I do know that there's answers to your questions.
Okay.
Partly because we've been working on updating parks master plans and stuff. Um, if you want, I'm happy to, with Brandon, make sure we send you all the info, especially because you came into it where you put in a lot of work, so a lot of it would be more interest of you. Um, one of the things in our first reading, is one of our first readings, the Parks Master Plan, right? Um, but I, I can say that we did put out a big survey at newer, you know, started the survey and we had an amazing turnout of responses, Brandon probably has that number by heart. Um, and one of our things was taking veterans, commons and Terry, and looking at them all together to make sure they're complementing each other and not competing with each other.
Sure.
And making sure we're not doing something that we'll never be able to afford. So we're, we're working on it, um, and there's, I don't know how much we can, not share, but just because it's still in the hearing phase, or it's a hearing tonight, uh, in the first reading for it, but yes, I know exactly what plan you're talking about because I, I've got kids.
So it's still is in, in the?
Um, a spot for the youth, but the overwhelming response for the survey was turning that into a dog park. And then, uh, yeah, veterans park, and then focusing on, because on the side of the highway, we do have the school that has basketball hoops and stuff, and then focusing Commons Park on, um, basket, putting basketball back in, but doing a covered pavilion, so it's year round.
Okay.
And then that's something, you know?
All right. Well, I know that the adults in the community want that to be a dog park. But like I said, we went to the schools.
Yeah.
Because we want to find out what the kids want.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, overwhelmingly, they, skate park was high on the?
Yes, that was high on the list of some of the stuff too.
But the, the obstacle course and the walking path and picnic tables and the other activities that we had planned there, it, um, I don't, like I said, we had, we hired an engineer, spent some money to get, uh, drawings up, and that was presented to the council at one point. I don't know if you still have those, but I would think that would be a much more valuable use of our resources. It's a much more beneficial to the, especially the youth in our community, rather than a place for the dogs to go hoop, so.
Okay, thank you for that input, especially with your history with it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, um, I am sorry, I'm gonna, is it Trent?
Yeah.
It's Trent, Trent Boston.
Yep.
Okay, come on in.
Okay. I just have a question regarding parking and trailers.
Okay, real quick, sorry, only because the camera might not, the microphone might not have kicked up when I called your name. Can you just state your name for the record, and if you want to give address to Lafayette?
Trent.
Uh-huh.
Boston.
Okay.
Seventh Street Extension.
Uh-huh.
Um, so trailer parking. Year ago, I was told I can't have trailers in the street no matter what.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Our code enforcer specifically told me to put them in the front yard, and there would be zero issues with that. Two weeks ago, get a letter in the mail saying we can no longer do that. Uh, you drive around the city, people have stuff parked in yards, and there's, you know, a list of, well, side yards are okay. Well, what if you don't have a side yard or a backyard? What do you do? Can I put gravel down and say it's not a decorated lawn anymore and park them? Why was I told to do something and then a year later, he's saying he never told me that? And now I have to move my stuff to where? Who's gonna pay trailer storage? I don't know what your guys' financial situation is, but some of us can't afford to pay parking two hundred bucks a month per trailer. What are we supposed to do, move? Well, you can't do that either. Don't know if you noticed it, what's that?
What size trailer are we talking?
Uh, one's twenty-eight feet, one's a twenty-foot cargo trailer, and then the boat's in the driveway.
Um, I want to let you finish with that, you know, I don't want to cut you off.
Well, I just don't, and then it also comes to all these ordinances, it's like, if you go through all of them, like, kids aren't allowed to skateboard on the streets or sidewalks, I see that happen all the time. There's never allowed to have semis and trailers parked on the road, that happens. So why are we picking and choosing? That shouldn't be allowed, either enforce all of them or enforce none of them. How do we? What are we doing?
And?
What do we do to get some of these ordinances off? How do we restructure it, like, what are we doing, is my question? And who gets to choose what's enforced and what's not?
Um, first, I thank you for coming, because I know that you were, you were one, I've been watching Facebook.
Yeah.
So I, I personally really appreciate that you took your frustration that you shared with the community there and then put action behind yourself and came here. So I just, I want to acknowledge that, because I, there's lots of times that someone on Facebook and I want to be like, yeah, come, come talk to us, come, please. Um, code enforcement is overseen by our city admin who oversees code enforcement. Um, to have an ordinance changed would need to go either straight to the planning commission or a directive from council to ask planning commission to look at it. Um, I have asked Brandon, he was gonna during his administrative report, uh, share a little bit more about what's going on with, um, some of the code enforcements that they're been working on the last few months or weeks.
What do you mean by working on?
Or that, sorry, Morgan, the ones that have been the hot topics, the, the, um, important, a focus on some of them right now. Um, one of them being the trailers. Um, and then another one was like carports. Um, so if you want to stick, if you want to stick around and hear what he has to say during that part, you can. If not, the update from him will be recorded in, on YouTube. But the steps that council takes when we get public input is we don't hash it out that night, because one, it puts our staff on, um.
Okay, well, okay, you don't hash it out that night. So I have to have it moved by the twenty-first or whatever, when do they get hashed out by? I'm sure it's not going to be before that, correct?
No.
Like, you guys don't even give an ample amount of time to come up with a solution for anything. It's, right now, this is it, even though I was told to do it, that's the only reason we did it. And then all of a sudden, it's not allowed anymore, because you guys decided to enforce something that you weren't ever enforcing. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we even need a code enforcer in the city? Is there a way to get rid of that? Could we get signatures to get rid of that specific job? Or is that not up to us, is it not a community anymore, it's not? You guys work for us, it's more just, everyone volunteers and you enforce what you want to and pick and choose, is that?
Well, no.
Because that's how I, because it never used to be like this ten years ago when I, or twelve years ago when I moved here.
Yeah.
When Preston was here, there were zero issues. Then he left, he came, and everything has changed since then, and it hasn't been for the better. It's been, for the worse, if you ask people in the community, I don't know who's happy, no one is, except a select few people.
I'm gonna thank you for your input. Um, I value it, and I'm sure council does, from your viewpoint. Um, I'm going to ask council that, um, if they feel that talking about code enforcement tonight is a priority, or they want to, we're gonna come up to additions and deletions, they can add it to that. Or they can, if there's something that they want to add at another time, um, to the agenda, another upcoming agenda, to please let Brandon know to add it to the agenda. But during public comment, we can't turn public comment into a big deliberation. It's, you make a statement and then council chooses what we'll do with that information.
Okay, so my question, can I put gravel in my front yard and now it's not a yard? Since I don't have a side yard or a backyard?
I do not know that answer.
I say adjacent, so that means there's plenty of people with corner lots that are adjacent to roads that park trailers on those? Do I need to go around and take pictures of all those and send them to you guys, so you can go harass them too?
Okay.
Like, you get what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying. Um, council does not make those decisions of case by case.
Those are just, the code enforcer makes that decision and that's it?
Code enforcer and then? Um, ours?
We as people don't have any input, it's just him?
Well, you have input with, um, doing the work to get a, a ordinance changed, but if an ordinance is, is on the book stating certain things, then our, we can't get on our city staff for enforcing that.
But why is it all of a sudden being enforced? You've got to align him to enforce it, or is that just him?
Um, because there's more information, more people are contacting than just you. So in your vision, it's, this is not a problem. But one of the upticks of happening was, um, a lot of complaints were coming in of different vehicles. But we're gonna stop, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call point of order, because we've already gone off tangent of how was usually the rules we set for, um, public input.
So when can we actually come in and try to make something happen?
You can ask, you can ask, you can ask our city administrator to put it on the agenda, or you can, um, ask your counselors to put it on the agenda.
Who are the counselors? Can we put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Well, that is where I'm?
Change, or can we get something done to where we get rid of code enforcement?
Well, that would be a council discussion. So you, you can't, you can't ask them questions right now and expect an answer, because it's that?
Well, I don't know how all this works. I'm not in your guys' world at all.
So that's where I was saying, I've asked council that, uh, the, our next thing on the agenda is additions and deletions from the agenda. We are bound to hold to our agenda, so unless we put it on the agenda, we can't hash out a topic because of public, um, meeting laws and putting out this notice that this is what we're talking about tonight. The only way we can put it on the agenda is by a counselor asking during additions and deletions to put it on the agenda and council deciding to discuss it that night, or at a later time.
Okay, so if it's all gonna be at a later time, can we push back the date when all this stuff?
Well, we will talk about, we can, if we're talking about it, that's something that would be a request to our city administrator.
Okay, so everything's a request, so if I don't move my trailers by the twenty-first or twenty-third, he's gonna write me a fine, and if I don't pay it, you're gonna put a lien on my house. That's what you're telling me right now? There's no solution to that? That's what the paper says?
No, no, yeah, I understand, but I don't think that's what the mayor meant to say. I think what she was saying is, if, if this gets put on, like, you know, if, if the council decides to put this on next month's agenda, reach out to Brandon and see if you can get an extension on that until that council has hashed it out. It would be silly for you to get a fine for something we changed the next month, so.
Right, something that will and probably will.
But if council says, let's discuss this next month, um, and you reach out and specifically ask, in lieu of council, putting it on the agenda, is, can I have a stay and extension until it's discussed? Since it's, if someone asks to put it on, either, or someone in the next few minutes could ask for council, council can ask each other to add it to tonight.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do at all for anything?
That's what we can do, and we'll, we'll get something done.
Okay, and there's no answers of putting gravel in the front yard and making it not parking?
Right now, I, I have a big discuss, uh, discussion about it, can decide to make that decision, so. But we can, we just need to take care of your intimate, you know, position you're in right now, we can, we can do something tonight.
So we could go around in circles and circles, still saying we can't talk about, um, actions right now during public input. Um, but instead, I'm gonna, um, transition and ask the last call for anyone else for public input, so that I can get to the next step and find out from council if and when what they want to discuss it. So that is what I can do, is bring it up to council in like two minutes to say, hey, do we want to discuss this now or later?
Sure.
Okay? Any, I don't have anyone else listed, it's, um, last chance in, uh, anyone that raised a hand if they want to speak, if not, yes.
Andrea, is lesser hat? Just wanted to talk about the possibility of adding a, um, carport to the side of our house, so that we? In? Okay. I guess there's a quote code development, which I should know, because he's the planning commission chair, but I just thought I'd bring it up in lieu of first.
Okay. All right. I will say that to find out the carport requirements or laws, which are, some of ours mirror, other, yeah, other code mirrors like state laws, some of it's put on as, like ramifications, like the state requires some things and some are Lafayette laws. Um, to reach out directly to Brandon for code enforcement, but Brandon, because it'd be a planning, right?
And zoning.
Somebody?
We'll chat it out.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, okay, so I'm going to close public input and ask council if there's any additions or deletions from the agenda.
I would like to add the code enforcement for this experience. I need time to be able to pull the codes to review. There's, I've seen.
Yeah.
So I can't make a decision tonight, but I would recommend that, reach out and ask for an extension, we've done that often times. It's actually with trailers, camping trailers tended, tended to be. Um, but then I can look into this and we can have a better discussion next month.
Instead of a rash, quick discussion tonight then?
Because I can't pull a code.
I'm agreeing with you.
I mean, one code can reference a different code, and so it's?
Well, and for us to find information out, what's the history of what's going on?
To, uh, to, to change a state.
Postpone the fees.
Postpone that, postpone the date, do we have to put that as an action item?
Um, no, that's, that's Brandon's.
That's what it is.
Okay.
But, but what I'm hearing from council is they would like Brandon?
I would be in support of the extension to allow time for, for me to research this, because I agree, it's, if I can't give the answer tonight, I don't want somebody to face a fine over.
If it's, if it might get changed the next month.
Absolutely.
So I hear from council that we, or at least the majority would like, for the next meeting to discuss specifically that code. And, um, are we, are, some counselors are such, um, putting their viewpoint that in lieu, or in light of it going on next month's agenda, um, to work with residents as applicable that, or an extension if possible.
Yeah, I would be in support of the city, I have been granting that request.
Yeah, but it's, this is discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I have one more, Madam Mayor, um, I'd like to add, I don't know if we want to put it, um, maybe before it's up agenda, but, um, uh, Chair Cur was asked from the planning commission to discuss things with the city council.
Let's go ahead and?
Can we just have to speak in the public hearing rather than adding an action item?
Are you?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Yeah. Because that's up after the consent agenda, so, okay, yep. Uh, okay, so we're up to consent agenda, and everyone have a chance to look over it, and if there's no questions, I'm looking for a motion. I need to pull the, um, minutes, though.
I move to approve the consent.
No, wait, I just, I just said I need to pull the minutes, so I'm asking if we can pull them in now.
I thought you were just for motion.
I did, I said a motion or anyone that wants to say something. So I, I'm requesting to pull the minutes. Is there anything else that needs to? The motion then would be approving it, um, without the minutes included.
Is there a reason for?
Yeah, there's some corrections.
Oh, okay.
Must be a lot.
Um, I move to approve the consent agenda, um, with removing the minutes.
One second.
Okay, um, please, hold up.
Uh, Council Paulson?
Hi.
Uh, Council Burrows?
Hi.
Council Christwell?
Hi.
Uh, Council Mackey?
Hi.
And then Council Gogan has stepped out, do you want to wait for his?
We have a, we have enough to pass it, so we can, okay, so let's put minutes on action item E. Okay, um, now we are moving on to a public hearing, let me get to that. Okay. Number? Okay. The purpose of this public hearing is to conduct the first reading of ordinance six fifty-two amending the Lafayette zoning and development ordinances to delete subsection two point two zero six point zero six L regarding additional signs. I am opening the public hearing, are there any conflicts for, um, any of the counselors?
Yes, I'm gonna announce a conflict.
Okay.
On the, uh, first one.
Okay, on six fifty-two?
Yeah.
On the signs? Right, that's the first one we're going? So this hearing is for the signs, not the park?
No, no, park.
Okay, so you're good with this one? Okay, is there any objections to me reading title and ordinance number? Okay. This ordinance six five two and ordinance amending the Lafayette zoning and development ordinance to delete subsection two point two zero six point zero six L regarding additional signs. This is a time for public testimony, but real quick, since you are back at the table, do you need to declare conflict?
Nope.
For, okay. Um, is there any public testimony about this ordinance? Okay, is there any staff report we need to know?
Madam Mayor, um, thank you, no, um, just what's in front of you, um, this was something that was tasked from the city council, um, around the election time, and so this was the kind of, the last piece, um, that council had directed the planning commission to work on.
Okay, is there any count, is, does there any further comment from council?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, under letter J, page twenty, temporary signs or banners that do not exceed thirty-two square feet in area. No lot may display temporary signs for more than ninety days in any six, three sixty-five day period. Only one temporary sign per lot may be displayed at a time. Does that mean I put out my Mayor Malcolmson for reelection and then take it back in? And put out vote for Joe, and then take it back in, I, I mean, only one sign per lot, I don't know if that's reasonable?
So we're, I get where you're saying that, I'm making sure following with public hearing. Brandon, we are discussing?
Just the removal of?
Just K.
The sixteen, I mean, the thirty and, uh, the thirty and ninety day removal.
Okay. So that?
Subsection L, two point two zero six point zero six subsection L, um, regarding the, um, it was, uh, political signs, and, um, the forty-five days prior, or no, the thirty days and the fifteen days after.
So this public hearing is just for that section?
Correct.
So I would say that if you have a question on it, um, reach out to Brandon, and if need be, we can put it on the agenda to start looking at that section too. Okay, any other council comment regarding section L? Okay, I am closing the public hearing now.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is Jim Jacks zooming in.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, typically, there's an opportunity for staff to enter the staff report into the record of the hearing before the hearing is closed. So if we could, uh, if the council could reopen the hearing and allow myself or Brandon to enter the staff report into the record, then that would be a, an appreciated procedural step.
Okay, Brandon, we asked you for the staff report.
Yeah, I guess I didn't officially say I'm gonna submit staff report as, um,
Okay.
Into the, into the record, sorry.
So, when I reopen this public hearing, I just, do I have to do every step again?
No, just reopen to the staff.
I am going to reopen the public hearing. Um, the purpose of this public hearing is to get like first reading of ordinance six fifty-two amending the Lafayette zoning and development ordinance to delete subsection two point two zero six point zero six L regarding additional signs, and I'm reopening it to the, um, staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, so the staff report that's included in the packet, we'd like to put that into, um, the hearing, uh, documents, the hearing, please.
Okay. I am now reclosing the public hearing. And now on to the next one.
We are need to announce, I do not have a conflict for this one.
You do?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, um, we are now on to seven B, um, public hearing on, on six due on first reading. The purpose of this public hearing is to conduct the first reading of ordinance six five one, amending the Lafayette Comprehensive Plan, Community Resources Chapter Recreation Section, two thousand thirteen Parks Development Plan. I am opening this public hearing, and is there any council conflict? Okay, is there any objection to me reading this ordinance by title?
No.
Okay. This is ordinance six five one and ordinance amending? This is ordinance six five one and ordinance amending the Lafayette comprehensive plan. Community resources chapter recreation section two zero one three parks development plan. So any public testimony?
We want to.
Yes.
Okay.
Ron Kerr.
My name is Ron Kerr and I am standing before you here representing the planning commission. The potential option of. Park plan. A couple of four items have come up that the planning commission will need support assistance.
And they they I know they answered this, but they requested like they you guys in your meeting decided to.
Okay. The first request of city council is to direct staff. To engage. In land acquisition for parks development. Uh, this would include a. Necessary tools, financial development language to support. Acquiring lands for small neighborhood parks. Commonly referred to as pocket parks. And B. The necessary tools, both financial. And development language to acquire larger parcels of land. For community or city parks. Both types of acquisitions are intended to provide both short term and long term park development within the city of Lafayette. So that would be. One request. Second request. We have a request for city council to direct staff. To initiate a request for proposal. To engage services of a park consulting firm or similar. To design and incorporate recommended and or desired improvements within Veterans Park. Otherwise, we'll just veterans park called Veterans Park Development Plan. We have a request from city council to direct staff to prepare to initiate a commons park citizens input survey. To guide the creation of a commons park development plan. Fourth request. Request city council. To initiate a request for proposal to revise the park master plan. To include the Veterans Park Development Plan when. Ready and prepared and the Carmen's Park Development Plan when ready and prepared. So. These would not necessarily be immediate things, but it's to start. The wheels in motion so that. Parks development, individual parks. Parks master plan with respect to city, small parks, large parks, future we can we can lay the groundwork for future development.
So get the wheels started on things before there's a stall out and then it's like oh, we could have already been working on that.
Right, start to lay the groundwork, start to get things prepared. And. While I've summarized what I've written, I will leave this with Brandon so it can be entered into the record as well.
And then you can can you send a copy of that to me? I don't know about I'm assuming of the council. I tried to take notes, but I'm gonna go back to my notes and be like.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and talking to us on behalf of the planning commission. Um, any other public testimony? Okay, um, I'm going to ask for the staff report.
Jim, do you want to take this one since?
Yes, I can. Uh, so in terms of a staff, a summary of the staff report. Uh, the first page starts out with a section one, some general background. And basically this goes back to June twenty 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 four. When the planning commission and city council held a joint work session. And consensus was reached to update the twenty thirteen parks, Lafayette Parks Development Plan. And the there would be a focus on updating chapter two, which is the community profile. And chapter five, which is the proposed park improvements. So in this. Twenty twenty five updated park plan. Chapter two is updated with a twenty twenty census socio economic data. And that included the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two American community survey data. And then chapter five was updated with uh, changes to the list of improvements. For veterans, commons and Terry parks. And those three are singled out because the council and the commission prioritize those three parks. As being the parks that the council wanted to improve over the next several years. So that is basically where this is all coming from. And then to move the process along, the city in August of twenty twenty four. Actually, uh, starting on National Night Out, August sixth. Posted an online park survey on the city's website. And the result of that was a. Huge number, something over four hundred submittals. Of the survey. And then later in Oc- on October thirty first, there was a community wide uh, Zoom meeting. And so those were the two community outreach efforts. With sup- that support this. So then, uh, sorry for the light going out, but it automatically goes out if I don't move around enough. There's some information about the two thousand four parks plan on page two. Some information about the two thirteen parks uh, development plan on page two. And then uh, at the bottom of page two, there is the start of the section about the updating. Of the two thousand thirteen parks development plan. Basically just runs through on page three, what the chapters are. And the effort here was not to. Turn the two thousand thirteen parks plan upside down, but rather to uh. Review those sections that need review and update them specifically chapters two and five. And then focusing on the veterans part. Uh, Commons Park and Terry Park. So moving on. Sorry.
You're fine.
We know what you.
Which is faulty, so I apologize for having to interrupt the presentation. Uh, on page four or excuse me, five. There are some findings. Uh, basically statewide planning goal number eight is recreation in parks. It is not a. Uh. Goal that's laden with a lot of requirements and so forth. It is a goal that has not garnered much attention over the last fifty years of the statewide planning program. So basically, the findings say that. What we're proposing for updating. And the creation of the twenty twenty five parks development uh, plan is consistent with statewide planning goal eight. The planning commission conducted their public hearing on June nineteen. And at the end, they closed the hearing, they deliberated. And passed a motion recommending that the city council adopt the proposed twenty twenty five parks development plan. And then I'm down to the bottom of page six for the staff recommendation. Staff recommends consistent with the planning commission that the city council. Have have this hearing tonight, take public testimony and then uh, pass a motion to. Approve or adopt. The proposed plan and that would be through the reading of. The ordinance by title only for the first time tonight and then on August fourteen, do the second reading and adoption. So that is my brief staff report and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Um, any council comments? Okay. I am going to close this public hearing. And now we're moving on to action elements and we are going to. Action item eight eight A, which is the first reading of. Ordinance six fifty two related to LA two zero two four zero four, which is we're going back to the sign one. So. Is there any objections to me reading it by title only? Thank you. Um, this is the first reading for. Um, before the city council for the city of Lafayette, Oregon and ordinance amending the Lafayette zoning and development ordinance. To delete subsection two point two zero six point zero six L regarding additional signs. LA two thousand twenty four dash zero four ordinance number six fifty two. Okay, so that concludes our first. Reading, right? There's no discussion stuff with that Brandon. It's just a first reading. Okay. So now we are on to eight B, which is the first reading for the parks one. Is there any objection to me reading it by title?
No.
Okay, before the city council for the city of Lafayette, Oregon and ordinance amending the Lafayette comprehensive plan. Community resources chapter recreation section two thousand thirteen parks development plan LA two zero two four dash zero two. Ordinance number six fifty one. Okay. That finishes the first reading of those. And now we are on to eight C, resolution. Two thousand twenty five dash zero seven recology rate adjustment.
Thank you so much, Jim. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm sure you all love seeing Dan come by. Um. He's here today to kind of talk a little bit about um, the next fiscal year. Um, and some of the financial oversight accountability measures and part of the franchisee agreement. If you want to come up, I know you have a little presentation that you you've passed along.
Even see you sitting back there, Dan.
I was hiding. With that introduction. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Dan Blue, Government Relations Manager for Recology Northern Oregon, here with. Good evening, Nick Olazir, I'm the Assistant General Manager for our Recology, uh, which is one of the operations here in the valley. So thank you for having us here today. And Nick and I are gonna kind of team on the presentation. Is it possible that you have it up on the screen or?
Um, if you give us a jump drive, we can.
Okay, I thought I said.
I do, I I can.
I didn't bring it on jump drive, so I could also just talk through it.
Okay, yeah, everybody has it on on that.
Yeah, we have a copy of it.
It's in the slide, it's in the deck or in the in the packet. I saw that. So just a quick reminder, uh, Recology, we're a west coast garbage company. Um, I'm not going to go through all the details because most everybody is familiar with it, hundred percent employee owned. Um, Nick's gonna talk a little bit about our operations here in the valley. I know you have a full agenda tonight, so we'll be pretty quick. Next slide.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, as Dan mentioned, I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with our operations that we have here in the valley based in McMinnville. I'll go very briefly. Uh, our collection company is located over off of Orchard Avenue. It's here in the house, our truck store, our administrative office is there for the local CSR team. Uh, adjacent to the collection company, we have a transfer station located over off of uh, Orchard and Alpha Lane, um, over um, just right next to the collection company. It's there that we have a very robust uh, recycling center um, that we um, offer for any of the residents who live in the community. Come drop off anything if I have. Next to the transfer station, we also have our compost facility. Uh, where individuals can come drop off yard debris, pick up bark, rock, soil, whatever they might have. So it's very unique, very one stop shop for all of our residents in the community. We're very proud of it and we're happy that we can offer it to residents as well. Uh, just really quick, briefly, we have eighty employees at our McMinnville facility here as well. That includes anything from drivers, operators, mechanics, including our CSR admin staff as well. Uh, thirty of which are are the drivers. Um, and that includes the drivers that service the um, residents and businesses here in Lafayette. Go over to you.
Thanks, Nick. And then if you are following in your packet, we have a little a slide on kind of engagement, waste zero services is what it's called. Just want to provide a reminder, an update. Um, we do do a lot of different events in Yamhill County. We support the fair, the air show. We do a cleanup event here, which is fun. Um, we did a new thing this year, Earth Day poster contest where we worked with all the schools and everybody submitted uh, posters. We got seventy two of them here in the valley and we uh, selected a single winner, put that poster on the back of the T-shirt and give those out at Earth Day at the transfer station. And are giving out at other events as well. The other thing I wanted to announce, and I think I talked about this before, we have a brand new artist and residency program. We've selected two artists. Who receive a stipend for four months and they get access to the garbage in the transfer station. And they make art from that. And then in October, in downtown McMinnville, we'll have an art exhibit showing off that art. It's very cool. Can't see the pictures, it might be in your deck, but there's a really cool cowboy hat made out of barbed wire, which I'm super excited about. Um, both local artists and we are in partnership with the Arts Alliance of Yamhill County on that program and it's the first of many years to come. So excited about that as well. I do also want to point out. That um, while customer service hold times have been an issue for us in the past, we are continuing to really work hard on that issue. We are down seventy one percent in our hold times year over year. And our uh, CSAT score, which is a measure of customer service, it's based on surveys that customers fill out, is really strong. It's at uh, four point seven six. So we still have work to do. We want to bring that hold time down even further, but um, we're making a lot of progress on it.
And that four point whatever is out of five?
Four point seven five out of five.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. Five is really great. And we're striving to get there. So it's. Um, and now the fun part of me being here is the financial part. Uh, so you know, as you're aware. Uh, each year we take a look at our past revenues and expenses. We do projections on current revenues and expenses for this cycle. Um, and we take a look at that report and we are allowed a certain operating range or margin around between eighty five and ninety one percent. Um, in the franchise agreement, there are essentially two different ways that rates can be adjusted. One of them is, um, I don't want to say automatic because I'm here in front of you and we're asking for a vote tonight, but. One approach is a cost of living or CPI based rate adjustment. Uh, the other approach is a full rate review. Because we are projected to land within that operating range, that triggers the cost of living adjustment. And so this evening, we're planning to adjust rates. By two point one percent. And your packet says by July one, so obviously past that date, it would not go into effect until September one. Um, but I wanted to share that with you. If with that two point one percent rate increase, it brings us to an eighty six point nine two. Uh, operating margin, which is right within that range towards the middle. So. That's why we're here uh, to this evening. I want to just mention a couple of things. It's in your packet as well. Um, the residential rates, what that two point one percent would do to a thirty two gallon curbside customer. Where weekly garbage is forty two cents per month. So ten cents or so a week. Um, and then for the ninety gallon uh, cart customer, that's seventy, that translates to seventy one cents per month. And then for the commercial.
And those are the highest um, amount of that we have, the ninety.
Majority of your customers are on the ninety gallon carts. I fully understand that any kind of rate increase is a challenge. Um, I do encourage people to, you know, recycle more and you might be able to work your way into a smaller roll cart is one way to save some resources. So I just throw that out there. Um, and then I also included in your packet, uh, an example of what the rate impact would be on commercial businesses. And the one point five yard trash dumpster uh, would go up three dollars ninety cents a month for commercial businesses. So that really concludes our our brief presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know this council usually has some sharp questions on the annual financial review. It is in your packet. I do have it on my computer, so in case there are any questions that come up.
Okay. Does council have any questions?
I got a question.
Sure.
Surprised. Um. Uh, I know that your projection and it was is within the boundaries and. The CPI increase, I understand that. Where would your percentage be if you did not do a CPI increase?
It's a great question and I have the answer for you. Have this in my notes, I apologize. Uh, here it is. If we were not to do any rate adjustment. We would be at uh, eighty eight point four eight. Which is still in the range, but um. Yeah, that's just the way the franchise works. So the idea with that is. Modest CPI based adjustments annually um, will help avoid a future larger rate increase. I think last year we were at. Fourth point nine and the year before that was around four point seven, I think, or four point three. So this two point one percent hopefully gets in front of a need for a larger adjustment. Uh, next time around, I also I forgot to mention it, but because the Recycling Modernization Act is in play now. There are some pretty strong tailwinds around uh, recycling costs. The there are funds starting to flow into Oregon as I speak. Um, which are going to bring the recycling processing costs down and we did a twenty percent reduction. You should see it in the annual report. Um, on the recycling processing costs, those eventually will get down to zero. And so that also is going to help take pressure. Well, we still have to send trucks. And we have to pay to have it. And we have to pay to have it sorted and all of that.
Recycling and yard debris costs, costs a lot.
Yes.
It's a lot. So, um. It looks like by your numbers, uh, your customers take a pretty good care of it. You know, you're, you're up at the upper end of the range of your profit margins being at the, at the upper end of, of what we're contracted for.
Yeah, I think the target in the franchise is twelve percent or eighty.
Eighty eight.
Yeah, and the range is eighty five to ninety one.
Right, so we're. Okay, okay.
So eighty, eighty, eighty five would be at the sort of upper end of that in terms of the margin.
And you said your number was without an increase?
Eighty eight.
So that was what your target range is?
I think what we set, we set to, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, eighty eight in the franchise, I think it is.
It is eighty eight, yep.
So we're right at where, when we adjust rates, where we target those rates to land. So we're right in there. I'm not at the bottom and not at the top.
And you are saying that, if I heard you correctly, that if we didn't adjust that, even though we'd still be in that range, where it'd be the next time, it might be a bigger increase than just.
That is the intent of the franchise agreement, is to do modest adjustments so that customers don't get hit, you know, with a bigger one. And I, I have seen it some places go as much as ten percent because they didn't do a rate adjustment previously. But you know, it's, I think it's better to do maintenance on these than to, you know, hit customers over the head with a larger adjustment. Sometimes it's necessary because the economy is out of our control, but, but it is what it is.
Okay, um, does council have any other questions?
Last year was three point nine percent. So that's. Just FYI, the franchisee agreement will be coming up for renewal in January of two thousand twenty six. So that'll be something we can discuss later on, but.
Yeah, we would love to come back and open up a conversation about what's working, what's not, and have that conversation.
Are we going to be able to be a little ahead of that for time to review them?
I, I was actually going to talk to you once, once Dan got out of here, so.
Okay, um, is there any, is there any audience statements or, okay? Then I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty five dash zero seven, approving recology Western Oregon rates effective July first, two thousand twenty five.
I'll second.
Okay, I have on the table a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty five dash zero seven, approving recology Western Oregon rates effective July first, two thousand twenty five. Any further deliberation? Hey Kennedy, can you please call roll?
Councilor Mackey?
Hi.
Councilor Gullen? Councilor Bruce?
Hey.
Councilor Presswell?
All right.
Councilor Paulson?
Okay, motion passes. Okay, now we are moving on. Is there anything else you wanted to share, Brandon, or did he say that after?
Oh, we can.
Outside. Oh, that's, okay. We are moving on to eight D, which is employee personnel policy revision. Um, any, oh, sorry, staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in front of you is just kind of the staff report, um, breaking down the changes for, um, including C, C I S had a, a good part of playing with this, it's been about five years. So we had to include a lot of the Oregon Paid Leave Act, um, some additions to the PTO carryover, um, we had to do, um, a, a zero tolerance policy for alcohol and drug use and just some other things that we had to. It's, it's been five years. One thing I did notice after publication is I, I was looking at the legal aspects of everything and not some of the, the, um, the staff names, but there was still the assistant city administrator was listed on there. So we actually removed that out of there. So if it's approved tonight, um, it says city administrator or they're designate.
You noticed that, huh?
Well, after years. So, yeah, um, and now this is all the, the employee personnel, just for those who haven't been a part of this discussion before, this is kind of like the, the guidelines for employee discipline, um, how we appear PTO, um, and it also has a lot of the CBA aspects into it, in the CBA that was approved last June, um, so that was reflected in here. Though a lot of the work that we do comes to discipline, hiring, et cetera, is going to be based on this.
So we could still approve it with the minor?
Yes, because, because I, I.
Changing the knee or who they report to?
Yes. So if, if, if all goes well with this and there's no issue, the council could, when the motion is made, they can make a motion to approve that with revisions as stated.
Okay. Okay, um, any council questions?
Um, has, uh, obviously the unions had a chance to review this.
Union doesn't need to review it, um, but the union knows everything in here is the CBA related. So when I communicated earlier with, with, with Greg, I was like, all this, because he had questions, all this is from the CBA was in here. So we have the ability to change it as the employer. Um, obviously we wouldn't do anything major without letting the employees know. And that would be triggered through CBA. The only thing we have fluidity on is like setting hours, like if we want to go to four tens or three twelve, whatever that looks like, we, we don't, we don't have to get approval, we just let them know, hey, this is what we're looking at. How, how can, how can we make this work within the contract?
Okay, I, I didn't know that we had shared this with, with, uh, how many people we had shared this with? Yeah, okay.
I move to approve the city of Lafayette's employee personnel policy as presented with the revisions stated.
Okay, I have on the table a motion to approve the city of Lafayette's employee personnel policy as presented with the, um, changes discussed. Um, any further deliberation? I just want to say we didn't give a chance for audience input, but I don't, there isn't any. Um, any further deliberation? Then Kennedy, can you please call roll?
Councilor Bruce?
Hi.
Councilor Paulson?
Hey.
Councilor Presswell?
All right.
Councilor Gilgan?
Hi.
Councilor Mackey?
Hi.
Passes. Okay, so now we had added eight E, which is the minutes. Um, there was just some grammatical where the wording was like, it was a completely different word. I gotta get to, what page was that? Okay, well, first one was there on page six, so seven of our packet. Councilor Gilgan states he doesn't feel that how the city has grown, he doesn't feel appropriate. Um, that's kind of two day double negatives and I just want to make sure that that wasn't.
Can you tell me where on that?
Okay, top line. It just didn't read right to me and it could just be me.
Mayor Wilkinson?
Yeah.
It should have said, it, uh, doesn't feel it is appropriate.
Okay.
To someone, so it's just.
Okay.
It's not in there.
I just wasn't sure what that would do to the content. And then page seven or eight of the packet, um, the end of the first paragraph, it says involvement in injuries on how to close out that contract. And was that?
Inquiry.
Inquiries? Yeah.
And the next sentence has one that says injuries also.
Yeah, there, I knew there was a second one and when I went back to highlight, I couldn't find it. Um, and then just a quick clarification change to mayor's report is that I mentioned I would be attending the executive session, but would not be at the regular meeting. So, which is why, uh, council president will be running the main reading. So those are minor changes, but those are few. So, um, we could take a motion to approve with the, um, standard change then?
Would accept the minutes with minor changes.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have it on the table, a motion to approve these minutes with the minor changes mentioned. Um, Kennedy, can you call roll?
Councilor Paulson?
Hi.
Councilor Gilgan?
I'm in.
Uh, Councilor Bruce?
Hi.
Councilor Maxwell?
Hi.
Councilor Presswell, pardon.
Okay, motion passes. Now, pull with your packet to, we are up to discussions. Um, sidewalk and curb repair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if you've been following along with your, with the notes that I send over, um, I've been talking about, um, addressing some sidewalk and curb issues around the city. And I sent you all, I think maybe two or three weeks ago, um, just some, uh, photos with addresses. Obviously those addresses were removed, um, just for the context of this discussion. And, um, just want to have a talk because obviously it seems like everything I do, everybody wants to complain about. So I feel this is, this is going to be something that, um, it's going to have a lot of community pushback, um, especially because sidewalk and curbs tend to be very costly repairs. So, um, I want to see how you all feel. With sponsoring a program to help offset the cost, uh, with supplies, for instance, Greg, uh, you have some numbers, just throwing out a number for cement. How much would cement be?
So surprisingly enough, uh, the local hardware store is cheaper than our vendor at about nine dollars per bag. So you're looking at about four hundred and fifty bucks per pallet, fifty bags per pallet.
And that'd be about fifty, fifty bags per pallet would probably be something that would probably finish the job.
On average, a pallet would do about four sidewalk panels, give or take.
So for some of the community problems, it would be less and some would be more, right? There's, there's some that look pretty.
Some of them look like they need to have roots removed or something.
Yes, even on, on, on more costly item.
Yeah.
Um, a few, a few situations that led to this, there were some trips and falls in front of people's houses, which led to, again, um, code enforcement push on sidewalk education. We started across the street, Robert and Greg, what, about six months ago? Um, the house across the street.
Yeah, probably longer than that.
Yeah, and once we looked at that, they brought me over there, I said, well, maybe it's time we just start looking at other places around town. And, uh, Greg, Kennedy, me and Robert, uh, for the past few months has just been tracking these, um, wanted to bring it in front of you because it, we, we are going to enforce on it, these are safety issues. And we just want to see if there is council support for providing the materials, if the homeowner does the work or hires a contractor.
Can we help the labor?
I would recommend not. Um, because at that, that's the point where then we would have the city do it. And then that become, you know, if you all want to.
Except I do it for free.
What's that?
Except I do it for free.
No, you're not, I don't think.
Personally, yeah.
I don't think you're contractor, you're a contractor to do it, like.
Not counting material?
Great.
Uh, if, if the city was to do it, say, for instance, public work?
Yeah.
Were not set up equipment wise to do something that large?
Yeah.
And I think that's a liability issue on the city.
Yeah, because every time they contract us out and for those things like, I, like, and I did confirm that if it's, if it's work that doesn't involve a lot of utilities, the homeowner can do it. But if it's one, you're going to have to dig up utilities and you got to get right away permits and that, that you made a electrical or plumbing contractor, a lot of these, especially the ones, there's some will run Jefferson and Sixteenth that are going to have some best treatment through it, that's going to probably need some extensive work.
Well, some people won't have too much trouble, they'll be like, oh yeah, let's get it done, I'll get a contractor. But other people, that could be, you know.
Yeah.
And eat for a couple months, you know.
And if we don't do it because it's been brought to our attention from trips and falls, we become liable because we.
Not, not, not so much, not so much liable, but if the city's been made aware and there's, God forbid, an accident, similar to like what we have at the ADA crosswalk, if we knew about it and it was one of those things you turned a blind eye to, it could, it, it can become an issue. Um, I know, you know, there's some protection the city has, uh, but just in terms of public safety, just like the front yard parking and all these other things, there's, there's a safety aspect to a lot of them, so, um.
Greg, some of these look, you know, I can't really tell from the photos how big these lips are, but is there a specific standard on how big those lips between panels? Or like what's the maximum the lip can be or not?
Uh, I would have to double check on that one, but I know if you could, you know, if somebody was to slide their foot over something and trip, that would be considered a trip hazard. It doesn't take much, especially if you're in flip flops, if you will, uh, to trip over something that's, yeah, maybe a half inch, quarter inch of a lip.
Yeah.
I mean, anything can be considered a trip hazard if somebody trips and falls.
Even with the.
And a lot of these are curbs, as you see, and I think a lot of it was done to, um, two were in water lines may not being dug down all the way like they should have from the developer, whatever.
Yeah, did you see these in pockets, like one development had more of this?
They were kind of all over. Yeah, they were kind of all over. We, we did, we did this over, we did this over a while.
It wasn't just like one development where that developer just did a shoddy job.
No, yeah, it was.
This one didn't get.
And then you get to the south part of town, which you see towards the end of your presentation, and the whole sidewalk would probably, is going to need to be pretty much redone.
Um, some of these are wear and tear and then like, as mentioned, some of these are tree root issues that kind of were coming. Like for me, when we moved into our house, one of the first things we had to do was take that great gorgeous willow tree down because we saw that it was about, um.
The second set of photos almost looked like somebody was out beating.
Yeah.
Looks like they were out beating on the.
I will have a time for public and just.
That's a really good set of wheels to do when you.
Yeah, but my thought there is like, I get this is expensive for people, but if people are just going and beating the hell out of yourself, like you can't blame the city to do it for that.
And, and I mean, some, it's hard for me, like some of these where it got so bad because the city wasn't.
It's going back to what the, what the resident said during the public comment. Um, I know, I know.
Like it's currently like.
During, during the interview process, there was a lot of concerns about code enforcement and the lack of code enforcement around the city. And that was a lot of my experience in the past. So a lot of the conversations coming around are probably my, my pro code enforcement stance. But I mean, I was hired to do a job and to, and to enforce policies and, I mean, God, I mean, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so a lot of these were not like, oh, I woke up and all of a sudden.
These have been probably for years and with the new fiscal year can come new projects. And this was one of the projects that kind of fell into the things we're working on this fiscal year as staff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and just kind of wanted to see how you all feel about it.
How many are from like a tire once hitting the curb to put their trailer on there?
A lot of it's rain drain.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
It's just, it can be a potential pipe leak.
Yeah.
Which I had to fix myself too, where water, excess water settles the concrete, which is.
Or roots.
Or roots.
People don't think about those trees.
Yes.
Yeah, like I said, the first thing we had to do was pull one because the person who planted it put it so close to.
Now this goes back, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just curious with, you know, there's those spots where the, kind of the storm drains go up to the curb, right? I know homeowners are responsible for their sidewalks and curbs, but is, does the city need to work with them on the storm drain when it's right there? Like, are we okay with? I mean, I guess, do they have to use a license contractor? Like if I wanted, if I lived in a spot where a storm drain came right up to my curb and I was like, I'm going to fix that curb myself, is that not an issue?
So that they don't accidentally ruin our storm drain?
Right.
I don't think so.
I mean, it was because the storm drains in front of your house, you have the right there.
You own the storm.
Right, but I'm at the curve. Uh, maybe you haven't seen me do manual labor, but it's not pretty, right? So like.
No, I know you know we are.
I mean, like, could you imagine me trying to put concrete right where the storm drain is?
Like you're talking about page two fifty eight.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Great one, we're not just talking.
That wouldn't even be tough for me to do, um I'm not an expert on concrete work by any means.
Um and, and I know cities do this all the time, right? Like it's, it's usually the homeowner's responsibility.
Correct.
I know that I'm just like, I'm, now that we're actually having to face this head on.
Yeah.
I also don't want these projects to potentially screw up part of our other systems.
Well, it's just the piece right there.
I think because it's a curb and not the actual storm drain, I think that's kind of where where we all kind of landed as far as, well, it's a curb, if, if it's a curb, it's in front of this Greg's house, it's Greg's responsibility.
So like page two fifty eight where it's once you get off the lip of the sidewalk, it's still like sidewalk colors like, and starts surrounding that big grate, is that considered the street down there? Or is that still sidewalk?
The storm, the stormwater drain?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The gutter area.
Yeah.
Oh, the, yeah, the, the curb gutter, that's a street, right? That would, that would be streets at that point.
Cause my, my only concern is like a homeowner is like, ah, I can fix this myself, and we end up pouring concrete into the drain.
Yeah.
No.
There's erosion.
Well, well, so, so a right of way permit would have to be pulled, and so Greg would have to inspect the final work.
Okay.
That's how, that's how it normally happens, the right of way, the right of way permit, right?
Yeah, the right of way permit would have to detail what their plans are, what type of road you control they need. Um any signage, if they're gonna be working out in the right of way, blocking traffic, closing the sidewalk down.
Doesn't it just have to pass like inspection too?
Yes, it would.
With the pipe ones, I believe you have to have a phone income.
So.
And I, my concern is that where the ones with the pipes are, you're banditing it, it's just still gonna get.
And. Um.
Well, yeah, some of them, some of the rain drains appear to have been laid too shallow.
Oh, yeah.
That's, yeah, so just putting a new patchwork over, it's gonna. Um so Brandon, do I hear correctly that you wanna know if we want to subsidize the full cost of the cement?
Great, so I, I was thinking since the council decided to remove the grant, the community grant, maybe we can at least put that money into maybe doing this for a year or two to see. Or I've only because that's the mon- that's, that's part of money that we have, that we can, we can say, hey.
That's probably already talking about maybe using that for the library stuff, so I don't wanna spend the same money by time.
We have the money if council wants to do something.
Okay.
I think my concern is spending the money and then having a bunch of homeowners who hire contractors anyway, and the contractors generally better sell, and we're stuck with the palace having touches.
Yeah.
Like that the contractor wants to use the cement that they.
Right, I mean, if they do this for a living, they might have a bunch already at their shop, you know.
Does, does cement come in grades? I mean, is there a grade for sidewalk, a grade for curb?
Can we do it where we don't have to purchase the cement?
That's.
Until, I don't know. Yeah.
That's why I just quoted a pallet.
Yeah.
If we, if we thought a pallet, Public Works could use that pallet. Uh if nobody, you know, if a contractor didn't want to come and give.
As long as we keep it dry.
Their mix from us. We wouldn't use a pallet. It might take us a little bit to use it, but we could definitely store it. Keep it dry where it was usable and then we would use it for our own repairs.
I call, I, I called two contractors just to see if they would work with me supplying the, the, the concrete, both of them said, yeah, no problem.
And, and, and his, and historically with, with the, the program I've done in another city, the contractor would be like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, the Public Works is gonna drop off at this location, and Public Works drop it off. So I wouldn't see that being issued if council wanted to do that.
And this would kind of throw that olive branch out there that says, hey, we know that this hits hard, we know that as a homeowner, it, it's hard to hear that you're responsible for this. Like, we do care enough that we, we tried to help subsidize it without.
What, what we would do is we would, we would reach out to them and Robert would make contact and say, hey, your sidewalks, your sidewalks need some work, but here is an application, what's up?
Poor Robert.
Here's an application and we'll work through this.
And how long would they have to correct it?
I think it's like ninety days right now, right? The code?
So like someone with these big cements, that's gonna be thousands of dollars with these roots hidden, they have ninety days to.
We can, I mean, a- as long as they.
So then ten.
Thing about code enforcement is if they try and call to make an attempt, we will work with anybody, just like on utility billing, if, if they're not calling us.
So if Mr. So-and-so who's got the, one of the bad jobs says, okay, I get it, but I can't finish it in ninety days, but I'm gonna talk to you and come up with a plan.
As long as that, like, hey, I don't take it, like the one on market, it's not taking a year to do that, okay? But I, I, we need to see improvement done.
When?
We would write that up to say, hey, in one year, you're gonna have this project completed, we're gonna give you X amount of cement in one year from today, if it's not done, we're gonna, we're gonna take it over and then we're gonna have to do the work.
And then we charge them.
Yeah, and, and then we, and then we will eventually put a lien out if it came down to that.
But my concern is, what happens in three years?
When you don't have it.
When we don't have it, and then homeowner comes and says, well, you subsidized theirs. I'm concerned about opening this door.
Cause it's a great, cause that's a grant application first come, first served. I mean, if you.
Okay, it's on, so that makes more sense, they just said it didn't come across as a grant application.
Oh, no, yeah, they would get an application and when, when funds were dry, uh you can apply again next year if city council wants to fund us. And that's why I put in the staff report, if they do it and say they apply in twenty twenty six, if something happens again, they can't apply again, if, if council continue to fund this and staff is seeing the issues, they can't apply again to twenty thirty one. So there needs to be collateral from the city that we're giving them, but we're actually gonna keep on giving them cement every year, but they're gonna have to do their end to complete the.
They have to have it done by a contractor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, they can do it on, if they're messing with utilities.
To get our cement grant, right?
No, 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 yeah, if, if, if a contractor wants us to drop the cement off, we'll literally drop it off, whatever. But if they're messing with utility lines and they're gonna have to do certain things within the right of way, then they were gonna have to get a, then they're gonna have to, we're gonna require them based on where they're at, based on the right of way permit. You're gonna need a electric contractor or a.
Utilities though, I'm pretty sure they're still gonna need that to be passed per code because of the whole thing of the size. Making sure the lips are the right.
Yeah, but you use a contractor to pass code.
Yes.
Like you, like, you know.
Okay, so like my husband, let's say, one of them was our curb. Um he has done this, he can still apply for the grant and get the cement, even though he's not a contractor and he fixes it himself.
Yeah, cause, because the homeowner, that's sort of the.
So I'm just making sure, cause I misunderstood the conversation you and I had before then.
Yeah, and I, and I had to verify with Nicole and Jamie that, as long as, yeah, as long as they know what they're doing and they, and they can.
I mean, they take the repercussions if they.
And, and we would do the, we would do the final, we would do the final inspection because Greg has to sign off on the right of way permit, that what was done was correct.
Okay.
Can we do David's? Did you even talk to David about this? Like, we're giving people fifty pound bags of concrete and be like, please don't hurt yourself, like, do you wanna talk to David about this?
I mean, I haven't, but I mean, people, uh cities, cities do this kind of programs every, all, everywhere.
Okay.
So it's, it's not, it's not out of the normal to do a sidewalk program like this.
So can we touch base with a homeowner that has an issue? Like a pre-warning, like, hey, we're gonna have to give you a warning and then after the warning, it'll be ninety days, but we're looking at your property for getting this fixed, that they actually have like enough time if they needed to save money, you know?
Well, we would reach out to them and saying, hey, here's an issue, we don't have to give somebody a violation notice.
Okay.
Um a- and for saying, hey, like, hey, Robert, me and Robert, we chat to them, hey, similar to the On the Way Cafe.
Right.
You have a year to sell, I'm gonna work on, uh working on a zoning case to.
You have ninety days to either fix this or come to us with the plan.
But we'll have, like, we'll have like a case, like in, in GoGov, we'll have a case in GoGov to monitor it, but if we see things aren't being met.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're gonna have to send you an official notice that, you know, and that would something that staff and I would work on to, you know, and run a by.
About reaching out to like people who are in like Morgan's Vineyard, reaching out to the HOA and saying, hey, like.
Is the HOA like taking care of it kind of thing, like?
Well, they're not gonna be taking care of it, but they're gonna be on top of there.
Yeah.
The people in the HOA for.
Your requirements typically just the curb sign or?
On this, we just occurred, so the sidewalk, so okay, cause it's.
When it's a slab, when it's by power, you're also required to four one one for power lines too, so you have to have people come spray.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would.
Call before you dig.
Yeah, I, another concern is uh like on page two fifty three. Where the homeowner is standing there saying, hey, this, this is good. That cold ass, now that's asphalt, but this is good, this is, I did concrete.
That, that would, that wouldn't pass, that wouldn't pass Greg's inspections.
That's, yeah.
So, and, and so when we reach out to them, I mean, there's not a lot of people, there's about what, maybe two dozen here?
Yeah.
These are, these are situations where we can have a conversation with them and say, hey, this is the situation, this is what the expectations are. We don't want it, we don't want to take you to court, we don't wanna do this whole process, but this property is in violation, and we wanna help you, here's what we're willing to do.
Yeah.
And did you go through every single street city? Okay, I just, I'm just asking.
They did, they did. Kennedy put it together and then I went out all, I went out with them and we just kind of talked about it and.
I'm just pointing out that it's not picking and choosing that you guys went through the whole city. Um I know that Commissioner Kerr, did you still have a statement you wanted to make?
I the comment that I had to make was with respect to sidewalks and you mentioned sidewalks and tree roots.
Uh-huh.
Thought on that is, little different repair, this is not necessarily the correct forum, but I'll put the idea out there so it's captured. Instead of having your typical dig a trench, rip up the tree, pour a slab, find out where the roots are, go in between the roots and put down what would be, think of it as piers or a, a pillar, if you will. So that between the tree roots, that concrete decking is raised, it may only be raised by an inch, inch and a half. And once you get, so you're creating a bridge that will pass over the tree roots. If it's a large mature tree, chances are those roots are not going to grow very much, but there's still a real room for expansion. You can create that deck of ridge, you can protect the tree, and then you can keep the slope on that sidewalk in that half percent, one percent grade, so it in effect doesn't harm anything, match up all your edges, so you don't have trip hazards. And the only other comment I made goes, I can talk to Brandon at some point if he wants, but if you've got two dozen people out there, might it suggest an information, literally an information packet you can take and hand to them, these are acceptable repairs, these are not acceptable repairs, here's the process and how it goes. Here's what we wanna try to give you as far as a measure, something.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Yeah, that would be part of that, I, I already have a packet already, guy, if you're gonna bring this in.
And are we going to put any kind of information out to the community in general, or are we just gonna?
I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll make the program accessible to anybody, but in terms of, we would just reach out to these people, we would say we're launching a, if council wants to, we dropped the resolution, we, we actually have the grant application. We put it online, the city has a new sidewalk application, if you're interested in getting cement, here it is, um but we would actually reach out to these people individually.
I bet you a contractor, sorry, go ahead, oh, go ahead. I bet you a contractor um would be okay doing like a few of them too, to save.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they actually, the people who were pouring a lot of cement in the um whole homes.
Yeah.
Um they were advertising on the Facebook page that if a bunch of people did it, they'd give a discount.
Yeah, sorry, Greg. Oh, that's okay, um the bridge, uh great idea, uh but it would still have to meet ADA requirement.
Oh, yes, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm certainly not trying to, I'm.
He's saying, or is it just enough that it still meets those requirements?
Yes, just enough, so, yeah, cause, and then if you do have something ready, you could always take the edges to make sure, again, there's, it's, it's easy to add the soft soil in, raise the grass soil around that, so it's just, let the weight be carried in places where it doesn't harm the roots, and that will, the little bridge section over the roots, it's three and a half, four inch thick concrete. It's going to be strong enough to support the weight. But yes.
Yeah, so.
Full compliance.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is just that we put all that information out, not just wait for them, like, well, you could have asked for an extension, it's like, very clearly, that, it just shows that we're trying to work with them and being proactive and like, if you're already gonna throw that olive branch, you might as well make it very clear that we're gonna throw that olive branch. Okay, so council, we need to, this is just discussions, you just wanna know if we.
Yeah, is there, if, is this something that council would look at supporting or I mean, supporting, helping out, helping out the property owner? Or is this something that you feel this is, you buy.
So as you, as you go forth, um contacting everyone about these sidewalks, does council support giving that upward?
Well, I wouldn't do anything on that until, if council wanted to do something, then I would bring back the resolutions, establish the program with the parameters officially, and then you all approve it, and then I would start reaching out, I wouldn't do anything until I had that. But if you say right now, Brandon, property owners, that's part of being a property owner, they gotta do with it, then we start reaching out next week and we come out with, hey, this is what I need to work on.
The thing that gives me pause here is this is taxpayer money to pay for this, and there are several taxpayers out there who fixing their own stuff regularly. And now they'll be paying for other ones to.
Especially like a few people that have neglected theirs or, I mean, it's a bigger problem.
Cause this isn't like a new rule, that it's their responsibility.
It's not just a Lafayette rule.
But, but everything else is a new rule recently anyway, so I'm just, you know.
No, I mean.
Did we reach out to him two years ago or three years ago or five years ago or?
Probably not. That what, we, we haven't had a full-time court officer in a couple of years, so I'm, I doubt it did.
No.
So.
It's one of the things people think of, I do.
Is there any other public statements?
I would support trying to help, for one.
I, I think the cost might be worth the PR stance that comes from that, because I know for some, it's gonna, like you said, this is gonna be a uh it could be a hot topic of, you know, contention, um if there's money in the budget for it, like that, oh, yeah, we could take it out of. But I don't wanna take that mentality of, oh, we saved three thousand on the community grant, so. So it sounds like.
Looks like it.
Kind of torn, so I guess if you wanted to work on it and bring it back, we would see if it comes to a vote and.
Kind of like guacamole, H Ls.
You just one way is, is very positive and the other way is, what, what, what are we digging ourselves into, you know?
Do we have a total material quote for what is, what we're finding to be the?
Like A to Z?
Mm-hmm, well, the most.
Like, like what a homeowner would have to pay?
Yeah, the biggest standouts.
Now, because, I mean.
Well, in general, what we would quote in total concrete cost that.
Take any square footage is.
Yeah, we're just getting a general amount, I didn't wanna do a lot of work if there was no support for it.
The other thing is if the drains weren't properly put in or whatever, homeowners might have the ability to go back on the developer for that.
Yeah, depends on how new it is.
Well, I understand that, but. Saying like.
And I was thinking of these things like.
I haven't worked that much with concrete, but repairing some of those curbs, you know, you, you just don't get to put concrete in and it stands up. Yeah, you have to, and then if you're working over a, uh you know, the, the storm drain or whatever else, you, you gotta put.
Oh, you won't patch this, you'll grind it all completely out, every single piece of it will be ground out, it's not even smoothing the whole bandaid you're putting.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna have another one of those patch spots, like, yeah, we're not gonna have that.
I understand, but still it would be, it's quite a project.
If we weren't in support, then you like tomorrow would be moving forward with the notifying people, which would speed up the notification, I'm just thinking ninety days and the weather changing.
Well, yeah, but, but if they said, hey, I'm trying to do it, but it's raining.
I'm gonna, my plan is, my plan is to do it.
No, get out there in the rain.
Yeah, no, I know.
You know, the other thing that can be pointed out is like, hey, because it's ninety days, we're reaching out, you know, really something needs to be done within the next six months or twelve months.
But we need to know within ninety days what your plan is.
Well, not necessarily within ninety, it's just acknowledging that, hey, really, it says ninety days, but we're trying to give a heads up, cause we understand this is costly.
The dead end of that's October.
Cause I'll give them some time.
It's raining.
To get it.
Once before, it's after that.
Pretty healthy with concrete.
Well, I wasn't going as far as that.
But no, you're right, I mean, if, you know, if you, if they say you have ninety days, the homeowner says, I'm gonna have to stay up to, for this, do it in the spring, as long as we have the time.
Well, I mean, if, if the council supported this and they wanted to say, hey, look, if, if they didn't wanna do the grant, by the time the resolution gets drafted and I bring that back in September, I mean, it's gonna, it would probably take it to the springtime to get it anyway, for at least something to be a big project.
But you would ask them for any kind of extension, rain or whatever that within ninety days they needed to.
Always willing to work with people on time.
I just.
Keep me in communication.
I feel like we're just setting the wrong precedent here, and then it's gonna be, I, I understand, like, we don't have to do this next year, but then it's gonna be, well, why didn't you and and it sucks being a homeowner, I get it, I am a homeowner, but it's just we're opening the door.
The only.
And so I would rather say, hey, this is an issue, this has been brought to our attention, we need to address it, at least at that point, liability on the city can say, hey, we we're working on this, but we're giving them advance time to start getting it figured out, you know? And I think that's a more appropriate way as opposed to.
You're saying.
You're saying give them time, not give them cement.
So you're saying.
Yeah, I just. Like my heart says, yeah, I wanna do that, I wanna help out, but at the same time.
And I was that same when I first heard about it, and the only thing that I could like wave why now and not in the future is because it hasn't been enforced for so long and neglected that there are some big projects.
Yeah, but here's the thing, just because that's not on the city.
No, I know.
As a homeowner, you should be watching that, and you know what you signed up for when you sign that document.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
When you bought that house.
So here we are, okay. This is now becoming an issue, kids have gotten hurt, it's been brought to the city's attention, so we're taking the action, but we're being reasonable that, yeah, the average household doesn't got a thousand dollars to just go dump on us. So.
And, yeah. What happened since we go up all these places? And we let them do it in the spring? What happened? Somebody gets hurt along those places? Since the city already knows about it.
Between now and.
What we do is we point out to them, hey, this is a liability on you as a homeowner.
Yep.
Because it's us addressing it.
And we're ta- we're taking reasonable steps.
We would be good because we already had an obligation, but hey, we already noticed, we reached out to them.
Okay.
They're in the process because of rain, so, so if somebody slips or falls, homeowner insurance.
I would.
That's right.
I would say my, my gut, as much as I wanna, would wanna, just, here's the man, yeah, is my emphasis would more be on working with them with the time and that communication of as long as you work with us and tell us, we will give you extensions, that's more a concern for me than can we buy them back some cement?
Okay, and, and also the whole enforcement thing, I, the rules are rules, right? Like, just cause they didn't enforce speeding on Dunaway for so long, doesn't mean I've, I've never gone sixty miles an hour though, just because they're not forcing it, right? But like, it's the, the law's the law, even if people aren't there. People can't force every law you're dead, you should still follow them, right? Like, so the enforcement thing doesn't really sway me, the other thing is, we're talking, we're just saying nine dollars back?
Yes.
So if some, I, if someone needs four bags, I really don't think thirty-six dollars is what's gonna stop them from getting.
It's the labor that's gonna.
Yeah, it's the labor and the expertise.
Well, we could include in that info to them that, hey, there's a few other neighbors in your neighborhood, maybe you guys can get together and. Talk and see if the person can do it, just cause it was, you saw it last year, last summer, I mean. All the time, they were doing discounts by having several homeowners, because they were laying paddies.
So, I mean, and maybe it's, maybe it's a, maybe, I don't know if it's an appropriate thing for Alcat or somebody to host an open house where they invite a few. Vendors and people who are interested in it, and see if they get some group discounts or something.
Might be more of an LDA thing, right? Cause with the business side, maybe.
Yeah, where any of these business is, none of this is like curbs for like third street.
No, 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 this is all residential, um.
Okay.
Okay, well, so move forward, I just, and I just wanna reiterate, getting, getting a notice about sidewalk. Can be a ten thousand dollar job compared to parking an RV on the street. So I just wanna make sure if people come here, we're not gonna revert back, because I mean, I mean.
To be clear, on the trailer, I'm not saying that we're gonna revert or change.
No, 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 I'm just saying, like, this is gonna be a costly fix.
Like, once the, once the tears and the heartstrings get pulled, no, my biggest thing is just, I want us communicating above reproach, more than the bare minimum.
Because the liability is taken on them, so.
Yeah.
We're giving time that.
Yeah.
How to do what you have to do, and if not, you're running the risk.
Okay, thanks for the direction, thank you for the work on that.
Okay, so nine D steering and add hobby committees, um, Brandon, council reports?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, there's, there's been some talk slightly about where we see um getting. Community involvement for boards, I know there's been discussion, you and I've had a discussion about what it would look like for, you know, I know there's some discussion about. Looking at the charter, looking at um, uh, parks committees, looking at, I know the transportation system plan, the scope of work. Calls for, um, calls for a committee of all different populations.
Right?
Yeah, so I, and I, I obviously, this, it's a, it's a mayoral thing. When it comes to committees and looking at how, how we wanna structure those and whatnot, but um, this is kind of a discussion.
Okay.
If you kinda wanna take the rest of the lead on it.
Okay, so, yeah, the, one of, the reason that, I mean, I've been formulating in my head, like, hey, we're gonna do parks. Do we do like a parks committee, not specifically for veterans or for commons, but just build a parks committee? Um, part of that was discussing with residents about like the history of that. Gets people involved that have passion about it, um, but then also more importantly was the, like Brandon mentioned, the transportation system plan. Um, part of us getting that funding is we have to meet requirements of like so many different people from different groups on the committee. Um, but then, I'm, and then we don't know what our commune, our goals are gonna be, but one of the things that. In order to meet most of our goals, because of that thousand, million dollar threshold. More than likely, we are gonna need to jump into a charter review, which is gonna need one too, so with a bunch of those coming up. Brandon and I thought, if we brought it to you guys to get your feelings on things, get your buy-in, are there any counselors that want to? Like, hey, I'm really passionate about transportation, I would love and support that and be on that.
So, thoughts?
Yeah.
The TSP one makes sense to me, ARX does not make sense to me, and the reason is, until we have the money to do the parks. That committee is just gonna be frustrated that their ideas are stuck in a committee.
My thought was it could help go after grants.
I think, yeah, that might be a different purpose, maybe, uh, the, like, I'm not necessarily opposed to that type of committee, but if it's specifically for like park ideas.
No, I was thinking of it as.
Frustrated.
I was thinking it more of like parks, um, like, one of the suggestions in the planning commissioners meeting is. Getting um, buy-in from like community groups and um, things like that, just, but.
The, the other thing I would just mention is, I would always, always tread lightly on the idea of changing a city's charter. Like, there has to be very, very widespread support on that, or it's going to look extremely self-interested by a, by a governing body, so.
Well, that would be one of those things where we would just discuss, like, if we chose as a council to revisit our charter. Heads up that it would be a good, or a charter committee is gonna be on the horizon, it's not us today deciding.
Sure, sure, yeah, and I understand, just that the, the, I'm just, uh, I just want to emphasize the. The potential attention that would go to those kinds of conversations.
I, 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 the reason why the charter thing came up, um, because when I was lobbying for the unsuccessful grant, at Canyon View Pump Station. Day I got asked, what is the biggest barrier to you getting this money? And I said, getting the money and getting voter approval in time.
Yeah.
And it's twenty twenty-five, a million dollars is, that's, I mean, I mean, you all should be able to expend that. And so, if you were to do something like a charter review committee, and like I talked to David, I think David is somebody who should kinda help be on that as well, but. Be very narrow in what you're looking to change, and don't let, you know, the committee get away, cause the mayor, the mayor can say, I wanna do a charter committee, I wanna focus on these five. These five things, what need to be looked at, let's look at term limits, let's look at this, let's look at that, let's look at the, whatever you wanna look at. And those are the things that the charter, I'm sorry?
And then after that's done, is the intent to dissolve it?
The committee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it would just be like an ad hoc committee, yeah, because then I would have to go to voters and this, but it would have to be city initiative, because it's gonna obviously have to go to ballot, if the council wants to look at something like this. I just knew, I know that wasn't a reason why we didn't get the money, there was a lot of competitive, there was a lot of great projects out there that probably needed the money more than we did. But every, probably every single staffer I talked to, oh, could I put that in one pager? I, I would love to have this money, if we got this money in August, we would have to go and, and do, and, and have a special election called. And calling the Secretary of State's office on how to make that work, they're like, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be against a hard time. So I'm thinking about the future, if we have these big dollars that we can get.
I guess we go into the sewer system talk.
Yes, like the sewer system talk, if we wanna get grants for sewer, like, we're gonna have, just like the reservoir, it was free money that we had to go out and ask voters for.
So you're not coming, you were, and I weren't coming together, talking about the charter, saying, let's overhaul everyone.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't think anyone's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I agree that if our main, if our main hiccup with the charter, okay, I don't care if you like or dislike the term limits. That's not make or break it for the city, but it's, okay.
Oh, you just.
Less, no, 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 I'm just saying in general, that's fluff to me, it's the make or break it, the less changes we make, the more focused. It is when it does go to the voters and stuff, so. I, I don't know, what's the step on the charter thing, you wait until after revision session, and we talk about if we feel we need?
No, I mean, if, if the council feels that, that's something that they want to approach, um, I think that would, it would probably take looking at the charter itself. At a council meeting and say, what do we think is something that is practical for the city in twenty twenty-five moving forward? And if there's nothing that comes out of it, then okay, then don't worry about it, um, or there can be at least be a charter review committee of, of a subsection of council, that could be whatever. But I, and that's, it's up to you, that was just a suggestion, because that was one of the things that came up in, in the um lobbying for the, the money, the state.
I think we definitely need to look at it, I mean. But we have to be careful.
Well, I don't, I, I wouldn't, I don't wanna form a committee to decide if we need a charter review, I think that should be council.
No, that's what I'm saying, and I think that's a discussion, and first of all, we'll get that.
Okay.
But, cause I, I think you're right, I mean, that's something to definitely address.
Um, so do we want that on the agenda before, after our visioning stuff? To look at the chart, if the charter, that's what we do.
Think probably after, and because if, if one of the concerns is expenditures, like we're talking about. Then I think some of the ideas that will come out of that session as far as future extension, yeah, I think, I think it'll give us a better idea of what that conversation needs to look like.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's something we can do right away, like, I mean, this can be, uh, I mean, this can be a nine-month committee, this could be, hey, we're gonna do something, let's try to get something on. November twenty twenty-six, or November twenty twenty-eight, or a May election, we don't have, there's nothing crazy important, but I do know it's, it, it's a barrier. For the possibility of future funds, or the, the accessibility of getting quick funds if we need to.
It would just be weird to change the charter to one number and then have our planning session, and be like, well, we undershot it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, and then Brandon, transportation system plan committee, how fast do you need that?
Oh, that's gonna probably be some time, um, I just got the scope of work, myself and Gordon, um, looked over it this week, we, we. Went back and forth on some things, I will probably have another draft of the scope of work, and then something to send over to David, probably like in the next month. Unfortunately, ODOT doesn't move as fast as we do, which we've seen recently, so, um, yeah. You're all right.
We've been very fast.
Yes, um, so yes, um, it's, it'll be a while, but the conversation, what I can do is I can, um, when I do my notes tomorrow. I can just send them what the, the committee makeup needs to look like.
Okay.
Just so you can all think, some, some people maybe to a point, because we need public transit users, which means you have one right here, but I don't live in town, um, you have, um, you need like business owner, you need. Um, an engineer, you need somebody from the school, you need somebody with a, with um, with a seen disability, an unseen disability, there's a whole different population. That we have to have on the ESP committee, because.
I think we just need a big bridge or a little.
Okay, so.
Sounds expensive.
Are there any other?
What they expect.
Are there any other committees or any projects current that you think we need something for? I can't think of any, but I'm just saying, okay, so yeah, Brandon, just let us know what. When it's time for that transportation system plan, council, if there's somebody that, that's sounding really interested in up their alley to. Be included in the early works of that, knowing that we are gonna have to put a counselor on, probably on that, let me know.
Council Paulson with her big bridge.
The KP, the KP Bridge, right across.
Gilligan have nothing assigned to them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just remember.
He has to recruit for use himself.
Yeah. Now, council Gilligan looks at our contracts a lot, okay, um, strategic planning session, Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, so I set a date a few weeks ago, but it looks like, um, two of our council members will not be able to attend that day. So I wanna make sure that we have a date here that I can put, so we, the staff can at least start getting the prep, what, what council needs. With adequate time, I think originally I had scheduled like September the fourth, Thursday, September. So how, how about I just say the fourth Thursday in October?
Have we always done these on the fourth Thursday? I feel like we have broken this.
I.
No, 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 the, the work session is, is, is a part of.
Brandon suggests we.
Can we do the second or third?
Well, the third is.
I'm at a family.
No, 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 that's, that's, okay, so here's what I was talking to Brandon about. We don't wanna start the strategic planning until after the summer, because of everyone's vacation, right? So until seven, so September, right? So if you guys all bring your calendars with you to August meeting. I know, I'm, I'm, unless all the counselors can agree. I will make whatever you guys pick work in my calendar, cause I won't be here in August to hash that. But what we need to know before we pick dates is, how many dates do you guys think this is gonna take? Would you guys rather longer sessions and get it over with, would you rather paired into a council meeting? And know that that's gonna be a long council meeting?
So can I just?
Yeah.
This, this might make it worse or better, September, I'm one of the people available on the fourth Thursday.
I knew that.
October, I am out of town for.
What does it have to be?
Hold on, hold on, well, if it's the fourth Thursday, November, the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving.
Hey, hey, gobble, gobble.
And December, the fourth Thursday is Christmas.
Hey.
Okay, so.
Happy Hanukkah, baby, let's go.
So with the, with the constraints of holidays, I feel that council is saying, even though it is a council rule that work sessions should be scheduled. On the fourth Thursday, we as a council realize that that is, and it's in our.
Is it, is it should or must?
Shall be.
But.
I can't.
Why is that a rule?
Cause we never took it out.
Check the chart.
I have.
That's council governing rule.
Okay, anyway, what we need to know before we even schedule these is how much time and how you guys want it, do you guys want it paired with the council session, do you want it separate?
There is five Thursdays in October.
One of those is probably gonna be Halloween, right?
No. A second, okay, the council will meet regularly at six thirty PM on the second Thursday of each month in the council chambers. A second special meeting or work session may be held on the fourth Thursday.
May, there's a lot of discretion.
I think that's just to guide us, as we all fight over our calendars.
We don't, I mean, we don't.
Say, well, I'm sorry, Council Gilligan, you can't be there, but the rest of us can, and it says it may be on that date, but. I fully support that, looking at the calendar, every fourth Thursday in the near future is a holiday, or still already planned vacation. So that's not gonna work for us.
How about?
You can do a weekend too, but I know how y'all feel about weekends, if I can bring my kids.
Every day is Saturday, what are you guys talking?
Must be nice, if you're tired.
Do you wanna hear, you guys don't wanna attach to the meeting?
No.
I would like it, myself, and then if the second follow-up is attached to the meeting, we can decide that. After we are focused on the first meeting and completing something, and it may need to finish something.
Okay, so let.
How about October sixteenth?
I mean, I'm. And I have to be.
I'm assuming September is still a hot mess for everyone?
To take away your weekend.
September isn't.
Yeah, oh, oh, let's just.
No, I was saying.
You're talking baseball playoffs and possible Timbers MLS Cups run.
Oh, no, no, you, you still. You said October what?
Sixteenth.
Oh, it's a Thursday.
Doesn't work for you?
No, I, I was proposing that date.
That is a, um.
Weekend, my bad.
So October sixteenth is a planning commission meeting.
But we can, unless it's an, unless it's an emergency, we can do a short meeting and then kick them out. Or not have, I mean, they're not gonna have it next month.
So they can, they can have a short meeting and then we meet at like seven?
Yeah, if there's something like a, a, a very answer public hearing, we can line up and maybe do like. Or we could just go over there and they can hang out here.
But, but we have to have recorded, don't we?
No, we have a record over there, we have.
That's right, we have two.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can have, we can have, we can, it could be like the skeleton crew, we could, team B.
Yeah, you would just not be at the planning commission meeting?
Or, I mean, I don't, I, I don't go to the, the, the ones that I feel I really need to be, so I would just. What's up?
And Nicole's.
Yeah, I'm gonna be there, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so.
Oh, hi, Chief, I didn't see you here.
Yeah, he's been sneaking in and out, so.
What time?
October sixteenth, anytime after six for me.
Six thirty PM?
Six oh one.
Well, I, six thirty is better, I'm just saying, and I know for a lot of counselors, we hashed it with Brandon before, nothing before six thirty.
I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put October, I'm gonna put on next month's agenda, October sixteenth, agenda at six thirty PM, at the community center.
And if you want to bring your own food to eat, you can, but food will not be served.
Okay, we will be meeting here, planning commissioner will meet over there.
October sixteen.
Yes, the audio is better here, Kennedy just reminded me, thank you, Kennedy.
So, here, and then we'll move planning commission over, you guys can move us, okay, and we'll go from there. And, which is a nice encouragement, like, if we can focus and get it done in that one day, we don't have to have a next. Okay, um.
Focus, focus.
Nine D, Bridge Street Rehabilitation Work Update.
All right, the best part of today's meeting, everybody's been waiting for this, um, just real quick, there is um, a little timeline for you regarding Bridge Street. Uh, we did find out this week that the ADA sidewalk work will actually be starting on the twenty ninth. So I'm gonna be personally reaching out to the um, ten um, properties next week, and just trying to reach out to them, let them know what's gonna be going on. I'm trying to be careful with communications for the public, because if I group them all together, one big message. They're gonna expect everything at once, so I'm gonna try to do a granular educate, I'm gonna try to do a granular conversation for the property owners. And then do just a little, hey, we're getting ready to start, and then the big start is gonna happen at the end, I'm at the beginning of August, when we started the prep work for Bridge.
So we are, though, going to make a statement, cause this is a huge deal that we're starting on Bridge, that, hey, Bridge is starting, um, we'll put out the dates.
Yeah, 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 all that's gonna be.
But we're not gonna just tell the two homeowners that, if, like, I want to celebrate the fact that we are, like, this is a huge thing for us.
We've got like two minutes to deal with traffic.
Yeah, so the, that's gonna be something, so we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have over a dozen or so flaggers around town. And Bridge Street is gonna be very tight for about a week. Very, very tight from about seven AM to five, six PM.
That's nothing.
All right, Brandon wasn't here for.
Going out, cause I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about not only like the neighborhood I live in, but others that are gonna be kinda on the other side of it. Like, are those homeowners gonna know, like, hey, if you go down to Bridge, heads up?
I, I was gonna put it, obviously, we're gonna put it in the newspaper.
Girl, I'm going up.
I'm wealth. Yeah.
Right, so I mean, like, the people who live.
Unlike on Washington.
Yeah, I mean, the people who live on the far side.
Are we gonna have one of those electric signs saying like, hey, from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're, um, Greg's team next month decided putting anything on the, the reader board, it's just gonna be Bridge Street Construction with the dates. Yeah.
And if you need me to do some kind of video or thing with you on social.
Yeah, and then, and then the first day we'll be out there, we'll take in photos, um, we're gonna put stuff on the app, Facebook, the newsletter, we'll exhaust as much as we can.
Yeah.
So.
Then, we should work with Kennedy if we do something again, like we did with the school.
Counsel Gilligan made.
Traffic change.
Are we gonna maybe post like a detour? Like if you're on the north.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
South side.
Yeah, what Anna gave me.
Detour.
Yeah, cause I think we're gonna have like four different detours going around. So it's gonna be, you, I mean, you're probably gonna be, probably gonna be like, getting a lot of complaints and a lot of phone calls. But at the end of the day.
You wanted Bridge Street fixed.
So, and I did, I did speak with Gordon or, um, Hunter, who works for Gordon. Um, we do have some street SCC money we're gonna use. I think we're gonna, uh, widen the sidewalk a little bit to five feet, um, for ADA. Um, and we're gonna do, what, what was the other thing that they had mentioned that we're gonna do?
Just the, the widening is only gonna happen at the intersections themselves, not the whole, um, fifth to sixth, there's gonna be widened.
Yeah, it, 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 it looks better and it's gonna last, it's gonna, it's gonna last better, so, last longer, so we were talking about doing that.
And Bridge's light is an added work order that will be done after finishing?
Yeah, the Seventh Street Extension, I was, we may have to have a very, a very special, a special meeting where I just need a quick quorum, because, um, a change order may be needed for Seventh Street Extension, and if I can't do the work to where it's under fifteen grand, um, it'll have to come to you, and I may just call a quick meeting, three minutes at the middle of the day. Who could just come here or just virtually do the meeting, approve the invoice, and then go back to date. So they know they're against time invitations for change orders, um, especially with August meeting and by the September meeting, most of the work being done.
What is that, what are you expecting?
Oh, change order for the Seventh Street Extension, because we, we had talked about getting it. And since it doesn't go under my authority.
If it goes over his spending.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what it was.
So, um, if that happens, I'll let you know, but do you have anything else to add on Bridge Street?
It's, uh, gonna be nice when it's done.
Yes. And I think this will be the biggest project we've all done together outside of.
Fun game.
It's gonna be nothing compared to a ninety nine.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Uh, Department reports, Brandon.
All right. Boom, 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 but it all, any question, um, I have one thing, I have someone called enforcement to touch on, but anything, any questions or anything before I go into report?
No.
Okay.
I have a question. Code enforcement when you're done.
Okay. Um, ba, 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 Judge Blake will be here next month, um, to do like a yearly update, it's been probably about a year. Um, but, um, he was out for a little bit, and, um, so he'll be here. Um, my review next month in executive session, if you haven't completed that, please, uh.
We have to the eighteenth or nineteenth?
Yes.
That was on my mayor report to encourage.
Scott, just FYI, Scott, the executive director from the COG, um, will be going back to East Coast, so he will be, uh, he'll be resigning. I think he'll be wrapping up right around, uh, right around my review time. So they'll be looking, they'll be looking for a new executive director probably in the next six months or so. Um, Habitat Humanity reached out to Robert today. Um, there are a few, there are some places in town they wanna kinda help clean up, high grass, high weeds, clutter, et cetera. Um, so as we get into the, in, into the season, Robert's got a few places that, um, seniors, so if you know anybody who may need help. You're asking them what is to.
Oh, they wanna like pick a beautification section?
Yes, yeah. So if you know anybody in a certain area or pocket of people, they're gonna be working, and so Robert is gonna kinda manage that, so if you know an elderly person who needs help. Um, next month, the COG will also be here to discuss city planning after our discussion last month and some concerns I think staff um, has had, um, I think it's time for a change of scenery for a planner. Um, I didn't wanna schedule a meeting this, this month, because I think with the, the, the sign stuff being done and some of the things that the council's kinda tasked the planning commission with, I think now is kind of a good time to move on. Um, so there's a couple of recommendations I've talked to McCray about, um, and they'll be kinda talking to you next month on the planning situation, on how we wanna go. We don't have to actually officially approve the planner because we have the master services agreement with the COG, but I, because of some of the concerns I've heard from the planning side of things, we wanna make sure that we're all in agreement with them working with staff, but also them being able to, um, work to the satisfaction of the council. Um, recology franchise coming up in January, um, there may not be a lot of opportunities, but we can always go out for bid if we feel that this is needed. I know it's a good service, it's very low cost compared to what I pay for waste management. Um, obviously, there can be things to negotiate in a part of the next deal, but unless there's any concerns with recology itself.
I appreciate the fact that they came with lower rather than pulling a PGE.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they, I mean, they come all the time.
Actual thing.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, if anybody has any concerns or questions, you can email me. Um, if not, maybe we'll just have a quick discussion, you know, September, October, hey, what's we're looking like, and then kinda go from there. Uh, da, 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 da. National Night Out is gonna be August fifth at six PM. Um, it's gonna be the Tuesday, right? Um, Kennedy was able to get some really cool stuff this year, um, and I think we've got some cool OSP stuff coming, so, um, that'll be fun. Uh, OSP, meaning Oregon State Police. Um, one more thing before code, so you may remember around the rate, um, the town hall rate discussion, water rate discussion time, we had a resident who, um, for numerous months thought there were some issues with the city and irrigation, et cetera, et cetera. Well, I found out this week in the pancake breakfast line that, um, when the developer installed irrigation systems, and it's all of Meadowbrook, so if anybody reaches out to you, I would think this is a blanket concern. They have a very minimal backyard. Zone one for irrigation is in the front yard and two, three and four in the rear, and even some parts of an alley, depending if you have an easement. Um, two, three and four were capped off, but they were still running. So, meaning, one was properly irrigated every eight minutes for their timeframe, two, three and four were going every eight minutes capped off, still running, but obviously discharging how it would normally for irrigation system.
So their concern was that their meter reading was so high.
Yes.
This is why.
So unfortunately, you know, obviously, nobody's gonna come and say whatever, but I just wanna let you all know that after about two years, we were kinda told what the reason was, so, um, we put a lot of time and effort into that, as you did dealing with the resident, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. Yes, and I think you do too, I think we all do, and, you know, there was, there was a lot of conversations had, so, um.
When was that found out?
Uh, I just found out this July fourth in the pancake breakfast.
When did they find?
Find out?
Yeah, the way it made it seem, well, we found out about it sometime, I would think last year. It didn't seem like it had happened recently. So, just wanna follow up, I know that was a big concern, so I just wanna follow up, there's at least closure to that, a couple of years after the fact. Um, and then I know there's some concerns, um, this month with the push on front yard parking. So, and, and RV parking and trailer parking, so just kinda wanna talk about that. I know there's some, I don't follow anything on social media, but some things have been sent to me that caused for concern, and I just wanna make sure we're on the same page. I, I first want to reiterate, um, parking situations are gonna be ninety-five percent are gonna be reactive, they're gonna be, we're gonna be, we're gonna receive phone calls, or we're gonna receive a report via email or for GoGov. Um, and sometimes most of our habitual offenders tend to offend and offend to where the city ma, gets made out like a bad guy, and at the end of the day, we just, we, we, a lot of those are reactive. It's, if it's egregious, like a trailer on the street or an RV on the street, Robert will actively, proactively do something. But if it's the neighbor's parked on the front lawn for the most part, or, well, enough, the parked outside for forty-eight hours, or they're blocking the sidewalk, or they're doing this, a lot of those things come to us because we just don't see those all the time. So, um, I know there's been some concerns about front yard parking, and I put some communication out about two weeks ago, just very blanket, FYI. The reason why I did FYI is because we have probably eighty different lot sizes in town, where not every single one is gonna be the exact same as a neighbor, or the neighbor across the street, or the adjacent house behind them. So I just put a blanket statement, no front yard parking, let's just be, just be mindful of that, and I think that kinda blew up. And I know there's some concerns, so if there's a discussion we need to have, I would rather have that now.
Well, aren't you bringing the ord, ordinances and stuff?
That's.
Well, I think they're, this isn't for trailers, but I think just maybe, I don't know if there's a, a bigger discussion we have, cause I, I mean, I know.
Well, one, I mean, if a homeowner's being told something or red documenting or logging what's being told, one, protect the staff member about awesome and.
Every time Robert or you talks to a staff member, even if it doesn't require a citation or whatever, or do we document?
Not all the time, right?
Not all the time, sometimes it's just.
If it's like a, you know, you put like a moth on there or something.
Yeah, I was, I've never told a native park on the area, I don't think I ever have. I tell them to park in the driveway if, if available.
I, I, he was passing around some kind of letter that said to, just so you know.
That said to park in the.
That it was okay.
I don't know, uh, to me, I just, to me, I took your, your note as, uh, don't turn your front yard or your front lawn into a driveway. It's basically the way I took it, but other people took it all the way to you can't wash your car, you can't back up, unload boxes or what, I mean.
What does designated driveway?
It was just like, yeah, so what about people that have gravel in their driveway and they're parked there always?
If it's not a defined driveway, approved driveway, then.
It's like they got grass and then there's a border and then there's gravel.
Kinda makes a third.
It's not their driveway.
That they can enter from the driveway.
Yeah, and they always have stuff in there.
If, if, every driveway in town have to be approved by the city, they don't have to have an official spec, they don't have to have like a, like a design? So you, you, if you just lay gravel out?
For the ones that are already there, they'll have to all move their cars.
Sounds like it depends if the specs included that.
Yeah, and if, and if it's been there, like, we, we'd have to look at it, and I just put it out there because we had two neighbors fighting over it, and I said, you know what? I came here because code enforcement, that was a big thing in my interview process, code enforcement, code enforcement, custody with code enforcement, there's no code enforcement in this town, and there's only probably about a head, maybe a dozen or so houses in town that are egregiously like blocking the front lawn, but I, I think the, the biggest thing is, is if we just allow the front yard parking to hap, we, we need to think about what it does for the infrastructure, what it does for lawns, what it does for the cleanliness, what it does for side destruction. If we, if you all don't want front yard parking, it.
Yeah, I don't want parking in my front yard either, but there's people that have parking spots in their yard, like gravel, you know?
Then, they're not official driveways.
So they can't park there.
So, but every, but every house is different, so that's why I tell people, e- everybody can be setting a narrative on Facebook. I don't govern on, on, I don't govern on Facebook, and I, I don't expect anyone to be to govern on Facebook, or direct me on anything on Facebook.
I don't make statements near your name.
I, I, people should just come to me and say, hey, cause we, we, like I said earlier, there's eighty different lot sizes in town. Every, every house is different, everybody's had things before, so we have to look at every house differently than this. So that's why I put a blanket statement out, no front yard parking, just be mindful, blah, 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 blah. If anybody had any short comments, they can reach out, is this valid? Is this valid? Is this valid? Is this valid? But it came to the point of like, this, 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 and this. And it got to the point, what? And you all know me, I'll be very direct, and I will always have my door open, you can even ask staff, I probably, sometimes I, they probably get annoyed by how many times I, I overshare. I know Kennedy's probably laughing, yeah, you do. The amount of stuff I overshare and I probably have an annoyance, I will never turn anybody away. Ninety-nine percent of times we don't get phone calls, we, we get phone calls on people complaining, but most of the time when they're, when they're assuming something, we haven't got a phone call yet. So if there's an issue there, if there's a letter that's something about Robert, I have never seen it. I have never heard about this, I had not, it, it, that's something I would have to address to Robert.
And, and that's just it, is, is, uh, I, I look at the social media, I don't, but usually the person that complains about Robert, first they'll come up and they'll complain around, uh, or they'll tell you what they did wrong, and then they'll complain about Robert telling them that they did that wrong. You know, whether it was parking on the wrong side of the street.
Or their neighbors.
Well, I went in and I blocked the driveway, then, then that, oh, you know, I mean, then they go off on, on Robert, and it's like, you just told me that you did something wrong, you knew it was wrong, and you did it, then you're gonna mad at Robert about telling you, hey, come on, don't block the driveway.
Yeah, and I think my only, um, Brandon and I, I talked a little bit about this because of how, um, over the weekend, it got posted on like a Friday afternoon, and then over the weekend, some citizens stirred the pot over exaggerating things like you were mentioning, I can't water, and they're telling you, you can't water your, um, you can't wash your car on the, and pull it off to the side on your thing, was my request to Brandon was when we put out a blanket like FYI to please try not to do it unless needed on a Friday afternoon, because then that gives the, um, residents a whole weekend of feeding each other without anyone having the ability to.
Clarify.
Clarify.
And I will say, I did come in that Monday and I had not one email regarding anything.
No, but like for me, like I had a few people tag me and I didn't respond, but, um, cause I even say, don't, it's like, mom, no, you don't tag me to get my attention, but I did have some people reach out asking me like what the designated driveway was, and it was really hard for me to not be, I was like, oh, you hit, City Hall, they can define that for you, but it's really hard when I can't, like, okay, you're gonna have to wait the whole weekend, and instead of getting them that answer, they were, they stirred the pot.
Yeah, and I, I apologize for that.
No, I know, that's, that's right. That was my only concern with the info going out, wasn't that the info went out or that we're enforcing that, it's.
Hey, Brandon?
Yeah.
If you want, I could make a copy of the, the, uh, ordinance on that.
That would be great.
I would love it.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay. And the RV, the RV parking, I mean, I've been in places where they don't allow RVs whatsoever in town, that they, I've been placed where they allow RVs under a canopy. When, the hard, the hardest part to being a policymaker in Lafayette is because we've grown so quick, so fast, and then there's two really divisive, divisive lines in town. There's new, there's new Lafayette, which I talked to, and they feel differently about Lafayette, and that's okay. And there's old lady who's been here, she's been doing things for so long, and you all have to balance out how, how to take care of the aesthetics of the, of the neighborhood, cause we wanna make sure it's livable, but also safe infrastructure, we wanna be able to protect property values. So all these things are things we have to think about, so I can't tell that to nobody, cause I'm not a policymaker, but I, 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 I don't envy you guys because I know how hard it is, but we need to make sure we just, we, we, if we wanna do anything with front yard parking or RV or sheds, it needs to be a pretty long discussion, and we need to be really thought out, and I wanna make sure what we do is gonna be set up for success.
You know, what, like, that's my thing, like, what's in the code, I understand if you don't like it, but if it's in the code, it's in the code, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, when I talk to neighbors, and they get going on what's on social media, I tried to explain to them that there's, you know, four thousand six hundred people in town, and six people are making six comments themselves, it's not thirty-six people.
No.
That's six people, you know, so.
And you can't say everyone I talk to unless you talk to everyone.
Yeah, so.
So this is an LCDO, so for instance, with anything with front yard parking, if there's any type of land use, like regarding this, the, I even think the, uh, RVs, RVs is a code or is L, LCDO?
Well, this is, this is meaning all vehicles.
Yeah.
But this is. RVs, cars, anything.
But the, the RVs is gonna be in LCDOG, right?
The parking on the street is integrated ordinance.
Okay, but the app on, on the property though, that's gonna be LCD, all right?
Right.
Yeah, so anything when it comes to the RVs, front yard parking, all of this is gonna be in the, in the, the land use policy.
But backyard and inside yards are okay.
I'm sorry?
Backyard and side yards are okay.
For RVs?
No, not if you're on a corner.
Yeah, not if you're on a corner.
Backyards aren't okay if you're on the corner.
The backyard is, behind your fence, right?
But you're gonna go all the way.
No, I'm gonna make it your own giant gate.
So there's nothing on, big restrictions on sizes.
The sizes.
Well, like the trailers, you know, cause I, that's why I asked him what this, cause like I said, code here might be something, but then another one's gonna say.
Now, the front, yeah, the front yard parking is all gonna be on the, in the, uh, the land use side of things. RVs and trailers, RVs itself and trailers are gonna be on the actual city code, that's gonna be chapter six.
Yeah, six, like one of them.
Cause that's gonna be traffic.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was trying to explain to him, is like, the, this is gonna bounce us all over looking at different things, it's not just one.
Well, and it's a code that's not just a Lafayette code, like, it's pretty standard.[1771.28]
I think that's important to do with re-integrated, you know, it's already been mentioned today, that, and I, and I know a lot of. Sitting up here weren't here at the time, but the council was brutally begged. To get Robert's position put in place.
Which was before you were here.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
So there was, there was a, I mean, you might hear more noise from one section than the other.
There was way more noise before.
There was a serious calling for Robert's position to exist, and I think that a lot of things are being accomplished that those people wanted. So there's always ways to allow people, especially.
Don't want it.
Right, and so when it starts to apply to people who have, um, you know, you mentioned there's kinda two sides of the town, who have been doing it this way forever, it. Doesn't mean it was legal.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's why, that's why, that's why, that's why we're the bad guys, and where you, like this, today you seem, you seem to be the bad guys, but you're just. These, some of these policies have been on the books now fifty, sixty years, that you've never even taught, even been even thought about.
Yeah.
You know, and that's why this opportunity, there's an opportunity to change it, this is where this policy board changes it. But in three more years, another policy board come in and say, what the hell are they doing, and then scoop it back up.
And it costs money to change an ordinance, it's not like we could just sit down and say, let's go over all of our ordinances.
Yeah, like the shed, we had an issue with the shed, I mean, it's, it's gotta be the same like material, like there's an issue with the shed being too long. Not getting a variance, like, a, a lot of these things. I know there's a lot of frustration on a lot of the planning things, but a lot of the planning things come from the state. And especially when it comes to, it dictates a lot of land use, and building code is pretty much dictated by the state, there's only so much wiggle that we have. And especially with the new, New Brunswick inspector, they're going by all the state code, we have to rely on that, so there's so many different codes that we have to. We have to navigate land use, we have zoning, we have city code, we have the charter.
Like the one that about carports.
Yeah.
The square footage and needing a permit, that comes from state.
Yeah.
And ours just mirrors state.
And our, and the land use side was aesthetics, which was the, the same like material, and the variance, the variance part of you, so. A lot of times there's multiple codes, multiple, from different, from different areas, but. Yeah, I just wanna make sure when, when we talk about these things, especially when it comes to parking, we think about things in totality. Because I know it's, 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 it's hard. And I know nobody wants to say no or say yes, cuz I mean, it's, it's. It's hard, it sucks for me to say no or yes to staff or to anybody in the community, but it's. Cuz I can say, hey, well, did you make this rule? No, this is, who, who made the, who made the rule? Council, this council has been in the place for forever. How do I change? I can't change the law, you know, and I do appreciate. Counsel Gilligan saying, we can't, we can't observe everything, and there may be times where, how come Robert looked at this, or Brandon looked at this, but not this? There's a good chance we're gonna get around to it, you know?
Or that you have, if you have a resident that doesn't wanna correct something. It looks like Robert hasn't addressed it because it might be going through all those legal hoops.
Yeah, and everything on here is, hey, they're in court, like, this is, this is his caseload from this month, everything is there. You know, everything but the person who, who called in, and, and other printed information, this is gonna be, so everybody can see what we're doing. You know, and what was the outcome of it?
But also, it's different based on the property, cuz they're all individual.
Yes, because it's, I mean, cuz you have a corner house versus C- Council Burrows who lives, who's an infill, so what he can do on his lot. Is a lot different than what you can do in your lot because.
Corner houses, I can do what other corner houses are doing, as long. And, yeah.
Don't, don't take an example of us, uh, uh, another corner lot that's not doing correctly, but yeah, and it's hard because. Like my house, when we were buying our house, we had priorities, and one of it for us was not having space for RV parking. But if it had, we would've had to make that decision. Just cuz we want it, doesn't mean we can have it, or like a basketball hoop, I can't, there's no place for us to put it, that wouldn't be in the way of. Our yard or driveway during COVID, Bella really wanted one, but we didn't get one because. Just cuz we wanted it didn't mean that the property we purchased allowed for all of the wishes we had.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry to have a long live conversation about this, but.
I know we had a long live conversation, but we still need to put something for Trent on. Um, the agenda next month, like, right, discussing.
What are you looking, what are you looking for me to bring to you all?
I don't know, but we had already told him.
I'm gonna be looking, like I said, at the codes, it's gonna take me a little while cuz it's gonna bounce me all around.
So just a follow-up conversation to this?
You know, it's more just. Just doing my due diligence of looking at it and.
So what I'll do is I'll just put, I'll just put a general discussion, remember there's L C D O and there's a city code.
But that's what I'm saying, like, that's what I was saying to him, like, I, we can't do this tonight cuz.
Yeah.
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 Like, this doesn't even define what driveways are.
Yeah. And that's gonna be.
Be an argument of, well, that was a driveway, well, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'll do my, my homework on it and.
It may take some more, I mean, I will technically schedule something for August, since you will be here in, in, in the seat. If you feel that you need more, if you feel there's more time needed, cuz it seemed like you were the one to sponsor it going on the agenda, if there's more time needed, just communicate with me. Cuz not, I'm gonna have it on the next agenda.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
So since you're the one who put it on there, if we need to wait until September or October, I'll leave that on you.
Yep.
But, okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Are we all, we're all good?
Yes.
Okay, and if anybody has questions, please, I tell everybody who lives in town now, hey, if you need anything, please read the code before. Please read your code, cuz I've been telling everybody that since I became a city manager, and reach out to me, so if anybody has a question, just. Give them, yeah, give them my cell phone on Saturday.
Can we put on the, the website, the spot that has. Both the regular ordinances and the land development in one spot, cuz that's one of the things when people ask me, like, wait, where'd you find that code? Because like lands, you know, the L Z.
On the planning.
Is in the planning section, but. Residents don't know that there's more than just the general municipal codes.
Yeah, we could probably do something where we group them together.
I can talk to Jamie in quality, if we can reasonably do that, but it's not gonna be.
Or like a link. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Or even if it says, please see blanket link for more.
And, and even if you put it on the website, we got city, L C D O, state, and I'll just. You can sit down, state says this, here's a reference to it, here's what L C D O says, here's the reference to it, here's. So for those top five or seven things.
So if it's a hot topic that we're pushing, let's do a.
Have it so you can do a complete drawdown of this, 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 and this, here's how they work together and relate together.
And I know, I know Kennedy and Nicole worked on like a thing real quick on, uh, FAQs, which will be getting out soon.
Okay, Robert had.
That's another thing I hear a lot is, somebody will look up the code online. And they go to another town and say something, or they go and take statues, and it doesn't matter, go by what our city ordinance is. They don't get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, it might be, yeah, so my biggest. Uh, request is even if they're not on the same page, something that tells people, these are the, you know, there's an L Z. There's more than just the municipal code and charter, like.
No signs, no park.
All right, let's keep moving forward.
Okay, any more on your reports?
No, thank you.
Council reports. President, anything to report?
No.
Counsel Gilligan, anything to report?
I got nothing.
Counsel Carthwell?
No.
Counsel Burrows?
Uh, nothing to report, just, uh, uh, thank you to the planning commission on the great job they did on their, uh, things that were tasked to them.
Okay, Counsel Kit Hill is absent. Counsel Mackey?
No.
Okay, Mayor's report, um, real quickly, the, for you guys to know, the first library day of the bookmobile was. Wednesday, Brandon was there, um, I stopped at the end, just, um. Shout out that our town had rallied and we have more than the bare minimum volunteers. Um, so I just wanna acknowledge that I'm very proud of our county for that, uh, garage sales are on Saturday, there's over seventy of them. Um, and the market, um, and the map is online, please do not come to my house that morning. Um, Brandon already touched on it about his review, um. Uh, they're due, Scott is also on vacation until right before ours are due, so if you did not receive it. Or do you not find the link on your emails, please let me know, and I will resend, I can resend you that link. Um, but Scott's not gonna be around until right before his due, uh, we had the town hall tonight. I probably will email you guys just a summary, um. Uh, I was, I attended, for those that don't know, Al Blanco passed away this past, um, month, he. Um, long, longtime. City supporter, they don't live in city limits, but our easement to the watershed is with them, and it was really cool just to hear the history. Um, of how much he involved himself with the town, even though it was outside of limits. Um, and I was able to meet with the new interim superintendent for McManville School District. Uh, she is an old principal from Washer, so it's kinda cool to hear that those kids are more than just on her radar, they are her passion and heart. And, uh, like I said, I will not be here for August's meeting, but I will zoom in for your review. And with that.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
All favor? Okay, motion.
Hey, Kayla, did you wanna do, uh, the gender review, the two day before like she does, or you're just gonna wing it?